I'm talking about the secretary to the cabinet. Who was copying that?
Honorable members, cabinet. If cabinet exists and a letter is written copied cabinet, I do not see anything wrong if such a letter is copied to that particular institution. I think it is in line with our normal practice that a copy of the letter. So honorable members, can we make progress? Is he on the same issue? No, honorable whip, I do not think we should spend so much time on this issue. I am minded to give the floor to the ranking member to proceed.
We are not going to spend too much time.
To proceed. Honorable Chief Whip, honorable Chief Whip. I am minded, no, I am minded to give the floor to your leader to proceed with his comments.
But I have an observation to make. First one to what the honorable Mahama Yariga said.
Honorable Chief Whip, I am minded to give the floor to minority leader to proceed.
Are you saying you allow me to speak? Is that, is that it?
You will speak later.
No, I want to speak now. I insist.
Minority leader, proceed.
It's important I speak. It's important, it's important. Yeah, so you should listen to me. But you should listen to me, fair. No, you raise a matter which is not right. We cannot begin on this note. He made a point, if you just tolerate me just a minute, leader. He made a point that...
Honorable members, can we make progress?
Minority leader, no, no, I insist, I need to say this. He made a point.
Honorable members, can we make progress?
Belated, no, no.
Honorable minority leader, you have the floor.
We are members of this committee, respect us, respect my opinion, listen to me. What? No, what is that? Why? I respect the chair.
Honorable members.
And I do respect the chair.
Honorable members. I intend to manage the proceedings today. Having taken a point of order.
Yes, so I was trying to get attention.
I have given the opportunity to my left side to also come in. And after that, I do not want us to engage in a banter on a preliminary issue. That is why I pleaded with you that let's give the floor, let's give the floor to the minority leader to proceed.
I concede, I concede.
Because taking you, I'll have to take some from here which would involve, you understand? So...
Speaker, no, no, please, please, please.
Chairman, chairman. Mr. Chairman. No, let, let, let us try and tolerate each other here. What is all this?
If you had allowed me, just a minute.
Yes, we would have gone forward. Mr. Chair.
Honorable members, order. Honorable members, order. I do not think we should be debating point of order. A point of order has been raised and have created the opportunity to my left side for a response. And once a response has been given to the point of order, we should proceed. So honorable minority leader, you have the floor.
Speaker, is it the case that you won't listen to me? If it's the case that you won't listen to me, that's fine, I'll give in to you.
Mr. Speaker.
But my colleague, my senior colleague, honorable Ayariga, use the word.
He's been disrupted, he's been in discipline.
I've been treating to the respected minority leader. Look, we need, we... This attempt at seeking to belate, that word should be withdrawn.
We need to understand that this is an extension of parliament.
No, he shouldn't be allowed to be using those words on the minority leader.
This is an extension of parliament. He ought to understand that. He's been a member of this parliament for four times. He was out of... You didn't give him the floor yet. You do not have the floor.
He doesn't have the floor either.
You see, the minority leader has the floor. So please, honorable Chief Whip, just give the minority leader the opportunity to, to, to this thing.
Speaker, you know, in this house, I respect you a lot. If it is the case that you are insisting that I shouldn't speak, I should defer to my leader, fine. The point I really wanted to make, a word used by normal Mahama Yariga.
Honorable Chief Whip.
Saying that the...
Honorable, honorable, honorable Chief Whip.
You used that word, it should not be entertained.
Honorable Chief Whip.
No.
Honorable Chief Whip. The floor is given to the minority leader on whose behalf you want to speak. And I believe he will deal with the issue. That is why I am pleading with you that let's give the floor to the minority leader. Yes.
Honorable Chair, I think we, on this committee, we try to respect each and everybody's view. There's something that we need to observe here. Let's try as much as possible to be tolerant to what it... We have been tolerant over the years. But why is it that this time around you want to gag and you don't want us to say what we have to say? Oh, no, please. Why if you are not giving opportunity for people to express themselves? This is the floor of parliament.
Honorable deputy leader, with all due respect, I am to manage the affairs today. A point of order is not supposed to be debated. So a point of order has been raised and I have given an opportunity to the other side for a response. Are we going to debate the point of order? It is on that basis that I was with a view that once we have taken a response to the point of order, the member speaking should be given the opportunity to continue.
Mr. Chair, if there's a serious concern, obviously you allow it to be expressed there. You should listen to each other, please.
Honorable, honorable minority leader, you may please proceed.
So Chairman, as was earlier observed, I need to reiterate on behalf of the minority caucus that we are pleased that upon raising constitutional objections through the earlier communication from the presidency. Seventy-six-three, there shall be a secretary to the cabinet who shall be appointed by the president. Mister Chair, in our view as minority, there must first be a cabinet. Here we are, we've only considered three nominees. Today, we are proceeding with the second batch of nominees. In fact, none of the nominees earlier... We have become aware that Mister President has appointed his secretary. We have become equally aware that Mister President has appointed his chief of staff. We have become aware that Mister President has appointed an advisor, a security advisor to his office. These are matters, there is no such cabinet yet. You cannot place something on nothing, it will fall, that is a rule. The constitution provides for a cabinet. And we agreed that that cabinet would have a secretariat. But there is no such cabinet in place. And the president has not even announced the appointment of a secretary to cabinet yet to be formed. So Mister President, Mister Chair, we insist that this is being done in good faith. It's our duty as minority to point out some of these things to government. We do not do this to obstruct government. In fact, for the records, this is the first time that major appointments, nominations are being considered expeditiously. Because our side is of the view that the government must be in shape to get the country moving. We don't want the country to be run by several servants at the various ministries. It's the reason why we are cooperating with government. Chairman, our second observation, that has to do with a matter of national importance. And this matter is rooted in the case of Theo Flores Donko versus the Attorney General.
Mister Chairman.
Decided on the 12th of June, 2019.
Point of order.
And it was a matter that was, it was a matter that my respected colleague Godwin Eduji Tamaklu did at the Supreme Court. The background to this matter...
Mister, 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 point of order.
The background to this matter...
Mister Chairman, point of order.
It's as a result of...
Point of order.
The... Some revocation of appointments that took place in 2017. In the view of Mister Eduji Tamaklu, certain chief executives who were appointed by the government and for that matter, they were under Article 191 and 195 or not to be sacked by mere operation of a change of government. This is what...
Chairman, Chairman, I have a point of order.
The court said... Okay, sure, all right. Chairman, if you want to take...
I recognize, I recognize honorable Ayariga on a point of order.
Mister Chairman, the standing orders, the standing orders of the Republic of Ghana makes provision for the establishment of committees, subcommittees, ad hoc committees and etcetera committees. Scope of deliberation of committees. Everybody open your standing orders, look at Order 6, sorry, 267. Everybody, please, please. I don't want us to sound like we're just being difficult. Open your standing orders, let's read together. Order 267. One of 267 says that in the exercise of the oversight function of a committee, the committee may consider a matter within its mandate. A matter within its mandate, number one. Number two, 2672 says that where the speaker refers a matter to a committee, the deliberations of that committee shall be confined to that matter. Shall be confined to that matter. The speaker has referred to us, the nomination of Honorable Abuja for the post of Minister for roots. And he is before us for vetting. Our mandate is to stick to the nomination and processing, questioning him and etcetera. What has that got to do with the case that Eduji has initiated? Are you getting the point? And that relates to the appointment of chief executives? Are we considering the nominee? Does the issue of how chief executives are dismissed, how they are appointed, the proper subject of this committee's deliberation this morning? You see, we cannot every morning that we come here, turn this platform into a press conference. We cannot do that, it cannot be tolerated, it cannot be encouraged. When somebody objects, then you say they were trying to be difficult, please. We're all decent gentlemen and women here. Let's keep to our mandate. We are here to consider the nomination of three nominees that are before us. Let's stick to that. National issues, national issues, so, so what is not a national issue? Whether there's a toilet in my village is a national issue. Whether, whether there's water flowing in my hometown is a national issue. Because everybody can decide what he defines as a national issue. But we're not saying that it is not even a national issue. We're saying that by our own standing orders, it is not a matter properly before us as a committee. And we are not mandated as a committee to consider it, please. You are a senior lawyer, you are a senior lawyer.
Honorable members, a point of order has been raised. I am minded to take a response from my left side. So honorable Chief Whip.
Chairman, thank you for tolerating me. And I listened to our colleague, our senior colleague, honorable Ayariga, when he copiously referenced the orders. And speaker, if we want to proceed on that tangent, if you are going by Order 217, I mean, in this strict sense, no, I'm referring to 217. If you are going by the strict interpretation of the orders, we don't even have our mandate to be vetting our honorable nominee. It's unfortunate this is happening whilst the nominee is here. Because 217, there is inherent subject matter committee. And these committees have not been constituted yet. So if you are doing a strict interpretation of the rules, then we are not even qualified to be here. Speaker, Chairman, what, what the, what the leader said, what the leader said, it's wrong. The deputy, the leader, the minority leader is seeking to raise a national issue. And it is not, it would not lie in your mouth to gag him. Earlier on, would you listen to me? Mister Chairman, earlier on, he used the word that the leader has... He comes here every morning seeking to belate and also uses as a platform to make all sort of commentaries. We think it's most unfair, it should be tolerant a bit. Speaker, the point I'm essentially making, would you listen to me? Would you listen to me?
Honorable members, honorable members, order.
Chairman.
So let's go...
Honor, order, order.
Let there be order, honorable members.
Speaker, it is interesting he's going by a strict interpretation of the rules.
Well, uh...
Then let's discuss it, Order 217.
Hold it.
But I'm not lying here, I hope you come back to me.
Yes, honorable members, let me inform you that we have the presence of the martial here. I don't want the situation to get to that level, particularly the non-members of the committee. So let's observe some order.
Yeah, with respect, I'll just conclude, I'll just conclude on this matter. On, on the matter raised by our colleague, he should just be tolerant. Unless earlier on, they tried to preempt even what he was going to say, which was out of place.
Well, honorable, honorable Chief Whip, are you done?
I'm just concluding.
Okay.
So I'm saying that if we are going to go, mind you, we are masters of our own rules. If we are going to go by a strict interpretation of the orders, then let's refer to Order 217. Subject matter committee. No, it wasn't waived, it was not. So let's go by a strict interpretation, then this committee is not properly constituted. If you are going by a strict interpretation of the rules.
Look, look.
So speaker, speaker, our, our colleague, he's incoming.
You are not even supposed to be in parliament.
Our colleague is incoming, he has not come yet. He's incoming, he should be tolerant and listen to the minority leader.
Address the chair.
Speaker, he's, he's incoming, he hasn't come yet. He should tolerate the minority leader and listen to him. Allow the minority leader to raise all the relevant national issues.
Whip, whip, hold it.
Why?
Honorable Muntala.
Why?
Honorable Muntala Mohammed, I can hear you loud and clear, wait for you to be given the floor.
Speaker, speaker, that will be all, that will be all.
Thank you very much. You see, honorable members, we all know, given the exigency of time, we rely on Order 3 to do certain things in the House. This morning, I have before me from the minority Chief Whip that Honorable Osay Nyako, Honorable Kofi Mafu are admitted as the subject matter committee members on Rules and High Ways. Honorable members, let us not create the impression to the general public that we are not complying with Order 217. Order 217 has been complied with. Equally, I have the list of the members from the majority side on the subject matter committee members. The impression is created in the general public that admitting these people, they are friends to the committee and they are not supposed to ask questions. Let us not give credence to that kind of misinterpretation. I am placing it on record that we have the subject matter committee members sitting here. I can move further on education. We have Honorable Dr. Edu Tum and Honorable Ntim Fodjo as, as the subject matter committee members. Now, honor Greek, we have Honorable Brian Achampung and Honorable Dr. Isaac Yau Opoku. So clearly, we have the respective subject matter committee by the list that I have received. So I find it very difficult to take the point that we do not have the subject matter committee members here. So, so, so...
Mister Chairman. Mister, Mister Chairman.
You don't have the floor, Honorable Brian Achampung. So on this note, what I intend doing is that if there is a point of order, I will give room for a response to the point of order. I do not expect a point of order being taken to the response or the clarification that I am making. So in my humble view, you are out of order. I want to give the floor to the minority leader to proceed, taking a cue from the objection raised. While honorable members, he has not responded. So he, he should be given the opportunity to respond. So that if there is a need to give a ruling, I'll proceed to give the ruling accordingly.
Thank you, Chairman. In responding to the objection by my respected colleague, Honorable Mahama Yariga, I shall first lay the foundation of the issue I was raising and I shall catapult him into giving him a reasoned response, which response I believe, Mister Chair, will lead to you dismissing his objection. Mister Chair, the Supreme Court, speaking through his lordship, Cote.
Honorable, honorable minority leader, honorable minority leader. The entire House is expecting me to give a ruling on the point of order raised, having listened to both sides. So if you want something to add to the point of order being raised, you are entitled to do so. Else, let me deliver a ruling on the issue.
Chairman, Chairman, with respect, he raised a point of order against me. And I've told you that with your leave, I shall respond. And I would lay a foundation to my response to enable you appropriately, the entire committee would know that his objection was indeed not founded on any law. In relying on the Supreme Court decision, which decision I have already quoted and the Supreme Court, speaking through my Lord Cote, paragraph 3.7 all the way to paragraph 4. I read, "The Republic of Ghana is a sole majority or significant shareholder in a number of companies. These include Ghana Airport Company Limited, GCB Limited."
Honorable minority leader, the point of order for consideration is that Order 267 is, is to the matter before the committee. The issue that you are raising relating to a Supreme Court judgment doesn't relate to the matter referred to the committee. So what the committee will have to consider is whether or not, having regard to the nominee before us, the issue that you are raising relates to that subject matter. Because the referrer is for us to vet the nominee. The issue you are raising has to do with the appointment of chief executives. So if you want to respond, if you want to respond, honorable members, order, honorable members, order, order. Honorable members, can you listen to the chair in silence? So your response to the point of order should take into consideration...
Chairman, you need to allow the leader to speak.
Should take into consideration the point of order being raised.
Chairman, you need to allow the leader to speak. I mean, it's total disagreement with you. Chairman, no, 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 no. I'm not disputing him. I will not, I will not dispute him. Allow the man to make his point, at least, let him speak. Let him speak.
Honorable, another point.
We were here, we observed...
You were not recognized by the chair.
I am not a first timer on this committee.
You were not recognized by the...
We observed what you did. We observed what you did. We observed what Honorable Atufasun did. The man wants to make his point.
You keep making this point about violence. You keep making this point about tolerance. You keep making this point about tolerance. This behavior is not being tolerant. You are not respecting the chair.
Kofi, have you been recognized?
Respect the chair.
Kofi, have you been recognized, Kofi? You know it. You know I respect the chair.
You have not been recognized and you are equally interfering. It's not right.
Honorable member, honorable members, as the chair of the committee, a point of order has been raised within the meaning of our own standing orders. I'm therefore calling for a response in line with, in line with the point being raised.
At paragraph, at paragraph three point seven, quote, "The Republic of Ghana is a sole majority or significant shareholder in a number of companies."
Honorable members.
"These include Ghana Airport."
Honorable members, it appears the ranking member is not taking the guidance provided. The guidance is to the effect that a point of order has been raised to a specific issue supported by our own standing orders. I am not aware of this particular standing orders being waived. I am looking for a response to the point of order. But if he insists on going on without responding specifically to that particular issue, honorable members, this is my ruling.
Chairman. Chairman, you can't. We have comments to make. Honorable chairman. Honorable chairman. No, no, honorable chairman. Honorable chairman, with the greatest respects, I am, as human as you are, the honorable member who raised the objection against me, as we are told, is going to be our new leader. He and I are going to work together. He knows as a matter of fact. Very well, then I withdraw that. That's okay. That's all right. No problem. Um, with the greatest, that's okay. That's okay. That's all right. That's all right. No problem. Chairman, I was giving my opening remarks. He's raised an objection to an aspect of the submission contained in my opening remarks. I am responding to him. My response to his objection is as of rights. The chair must listen in silence to my response and thereafter make a ruling, indeed in silence. The chair must listen to my response. Mr. Chair, there's something that is very clear. When Honorable Yariga had the opportunity, we all went quiet. My side, not a single soul opened its mouth because we felt he was raising a point that would require us to respond. We kept quiet. It is our turn to speak. We should be allowed to make our point. I'm responding to his point of order and I've said, I shall rely on a Supreme Court ruling to lay the foundation and use that to catapult the actual response. And so I should be allowed. And I have quoted, I have quoted the law and I'm relying on the paragraph. Let me finish reading when I finish. Yes, don't worry. Don't worry. So let me finish. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair, I need to finish. I need to finish. So, "The Republic of Ghana is a sole majority or significant shareholder in a number of companies. These include Ghana Airport Company Limited, GCB Bank Limited, Goiil Limited, State Housing Company Limited and National Investment Bank Limited. These are not statutory boards or corporations. They are limited liability companies incorporated under the Companies Act. Some are listed on the stock exchange. Upon perpulsive interpretation
I recognize honorable Amaboah on a point of order.
Oh, when I'm responding to a point of order, chairman, chairman, wait. Chairman, you are, chairman.
Chairman, the reason I raised this point of order, I take it to order two six seven of our standing orders. That the abortions this morning must be centered around our mandate. And our mandate this morning is to vet the minister for roads and highways nominee and all actions that is coming from the minority or the ranking member must be related to roads, relevant to roads and highways. And so, chairman, I'm calling on you to rule respectfully. Rule the ranking member that is completely out of order. Well, I believe the issue being raised by the deputy majority leader is on point of relevance. I would urge the ranking member to take it into consideration in his response.
Thank you very much, chairman. I continue. Some are listed on the Ghana Stock Exchange. Upon perpulsive interpretation of section fourteen of act eight four five, we hold that members of the governing boards of these companies and chief executives are not affected by section fourteen of act eight four five. Members of the boards and chief executives of such companies shall only be removed in accordance with the articles of incorporation of the company and the Companies Act nineteen sixty-three. Section fourteen and.
Majority leader, are you on point of order?
Governing bodies.
Or point of information? Or you want to interrupt? On point of order? Very well. Your, your interruption is less, less accommodating.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we have traveled this road before. This will be not be the first time we will vet a nominee. This will not be the end. And, Mr. Chairman, at all times, we are guided by our standing orders. Our standing orders on this matter is so clear. Mr. Chairman, the orders of our, of this house is clear that any time a committee, a matter has been referred to a committee, the committee must concentrate and deal with the matter before the committee. The minority leader is bringing in matters that relate to appointment and dismissal of chief executives. It has nothing to do with the matter before us. Sir Chairman, this cannot be tolerated. This cannot be tolerated. The majority leader, the, the minority leader can at all times address the media or use other tools available to him as the major, as the minority leader to address his concerns. But he cannot use this platform to address matters that are irrelevant to what is before us. What he's talking about, Mr. Chairman, is irrelevant to the matter before us. And so we cannot entertain it. Sir Chairman, I urge you to rule him completely out of order. He is out of order. Please rule him out and let's deal with the matter before us.
Chairman, I reply.
Rule him out because what the matter before us has nothing to do with what he's asking, what, what, what he's reading. There are other tools he can use. Parliament will be sitting tomorrow. He can come in the form of a statement or whatever he want to do. But as we sit here, we are here to vet the minister responsible for roads. The minister responsible for roads. Let's deal with the matter. The man has been sitting here for how long? For one hour, dealing with preliminary issues. This is not the platform, Sir Chairman. Sir Chairman, be strong and do your job.
Honorable members, I will recognize you. Honorable members, honorable Brian Achampung, with all due respect, you are not a subject matter committee member for the appointment committee in relation to roads and highways. Therefore, you do not have the right and you cannot be given the platform to speak. I am told by the list provided by the whip to the effect that you should be recognized as a subject matter committee member for Agri. And I'm certainly going to give you, I'm going to give you the floor when you get to the vetting of Agri. The composition of the appointment committee is by standing order two one seven. It is clear that the committee is made up of eleven members and the committee, the committee should be assisted by leadership of the subject matter committee. So once the minister designated before us is for roads and highways, the list submitted to me by the minority side to be the subject matter committee leadership members is what I am going to go by. That is why I have not given the floor to Muntala Mohammed to speak. Thank you very much. So all the other members should take notes accordingly. Honorable Deputy Minority Leader.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm very happy that our honorable, uh, leader, the outgoing leader of the majority side mentioned the fact that the issues that are being raised relates to appointment of chief executives and everything. Uh, committee's name is Appointments Committee. If there are issues, no, let me tell, it's not just whether ministers or not. What, what I, I believe, I believe that we need to be tolerant with each other. Let people, it's a preliminary issues that is raised and it should be given the chance. If there are some flaws in appointment, I think that one which you listen to, you cannot rule him out.
I recognize honorable Roxanne Nelson, the former.
Chairman, thank you very much. Chairman, first of all, there's no rule of this house that demands that the ranking member to the appointment committee must necessarily and willingly deliver an opening remark. It is not binding at all times. So if the invitation is a Ketsi, if he continues to abuse the Ketsi, it has to be withdrawn. He is aggressively abusing this Ketsi in a very prolonged manner. So I suggest that that Ketsi be withdrawn. So we, we, so we deal with the matter at hand. If he gets his turn to ask questions, he could frame the issues he's raising in the form of a question directed at the nominee. If the nominee is minded, he will respond. If it's not, he may not answer. Look, look, in Boyfio, in Boyfio versus A, A, NTHC, where a procedure is provided for it to be done, it is that procedure that must, that must be applied. He's using the wrongful room to deal with the matter that he thinks strongly about. He should go to court. This is not the forum convenience. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman.
Let, let me hear from the, the ran, ran, ranking member on roads and highways.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, well, I, this is my first time joining the committee for the vetting of, uh, the nominee. I don't want to think and I don't want to believe that this is exactly what happens when the committee meets to vet. I believe all of us are members of parliament and at a point in time, we have to accommodate each other. I've seen the back and forth. We've been spending almost an hour going back and forth. I would suggest it's your ranking. He is deputizing you. Just give him, well, I, I see whether, yes, you, you are, he is assisting, whether he's deputizing or assisting him, he's, that is the ranking.
He's a very important.
He's a very important member of the committee. And I will plead with you, Mr. Chairman. It is five minutes, ten minutes. We have been raising point of order back and forth on this matter. Just give him five minutes to wrap up and let us move on. Other than that.
Well, honorable members, I have listened to all of you and I'm inclined to say that it is trite learning when a procedure is set down for a right to be exercised. It is that procedure alone that must be used in exercising the right. He mentioned the case of Boyfio versus NTHC. I want to add the principles established in the case of Ashcam versus Karam. It is also true that when a matter is referred to the committee, the committee must limit itself to the referrer. The referrer to the appointment committee has nothing to do with the appointment of chief executives. I believe it is for a stated reason that the framework of the constitution does not allow chief executives to be vetted by parliament. It is for a stated reason that our standing orders do not allow vetting of the chief executives. So any issue relating to the appointment of chief executives, it is not a matter for consideration by the appointment committee. I would therefore urge upon the ranking member not to introduce any matter which is not within the ambit of the appointment committee. Let's limit ourselves to the referrer by the Speaker of Parliament and we can make progress. Any matter which is not within the ambit of the appointment committee is hereby ruled out of order.
Chairman.
Honorable ranking and minority leader, please conclude.
Chairman. Chairman. I am happy that you have referred to some Supreme Court rulings and my respected colleague, Roxanne Defiamakpo, also referred to a Supreme Court decision in this submission. I, I would therefore rely on the same right to proceed in my response to the objection you gave by relying on the Supreme Court.
Honorable, honorable, honorable ranking.
That I was reading.
Honorable, honorable ranking.
Chairman.
Honorable ranking member. I believed, I believed my ruling is loud and clear. So limit yourself to the mandate of the committee, please, with all due respect.
Paragraph, paragraph three point eight. The constitution establishes a number of governing bodies for public services.
Honorable minority leader, you are again out of order. Honorable minority leader, you are out of order. Honorable members, can we proceed? Honorable members, can we proceed? Honorable members, you cannot ask your members to own the mic. Honorable members, let's proceed. I would call on honorable Mohammed Shaibu to start his question. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Chairman. 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 Chairman, I have objections. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Chairman, I object.
Honorable nominee.
Chairman, I object to the conduct, the conduct.
Congratulations, Honorable nominee.
Honorable Chairman, we cannot, we cannot go, we cannot go on in this way.
Congratulations, one more time.
No, 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 don't do this too, Chairman, no, you can't do this. It's, it's, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen, no, it's not gonna happen.
I've looked through your CV.
It's not, it's not, it's not gonna happen.
The question of competence.
It's not gonna happen.
It's not endowed.
I've accorded you every ketsey.
Honorable nominee.
We've accorded you every ketsey.
May you listen to me.
We've accorded you every ketsey.
Honorable nominee, the former roads minister.
Chairman, we have, we have, we have accorded every ketsey.
What?
Your approach, your approach is not what we had agreed on.
And he said that the NDC government had left behind one point. Honorable members, I intend to suspend the sitting for five minutes. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to look with favor upon this parliament of the Republic of Ghana. Grant that it may perform its high duty in their sites. Give divine guidance to the president of the republic. Endow members of parliament and ministers of state with discernment and vision, integrity and courage that through the labors of government, this land and people may be well and truly served with their good purpose, purposes for the common human life be realized in our midst. O God, grant us a vision of our country, fair as it might be, a country of righteousness, where none shall wrong his neighbor, a country of plenty, where evil and poverty shall be done away with, a country of brotherhood, where all success shall be founded on service, and honor shall be given to the deserving, a country of peace, where government shall rest on the will of the people and the love for the common good. Bless the effort of those who struggle to make this vision a living reality, inspire and strengthen our people that they may give time, thought and sacrifice to speed the day of the coming beauty of Ghana and Africa. Amen. Honorable members, based on the nomination by the communication from the president, we have before us today Honorable Kwame Govens Abuja as minister designate for roads and transport. Roads and highways thereafter, we shall have Honorable Haruna Idrissu, minister designate for education, and Honorable Eriko Poku, minister designate for food and agriculture. Honorable members, we've agreed to start the day with Honorable Govens Kwame Abuja. Clerk of the committee, may you proceed to conduct the swearing in for the nominee.
I hereby.
Honorable nominee, your microphone, please.
Aye.
Aye, Govens Kwame Abuja.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The true, whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Honorable members, may I find out from my ranking member whether he has opening remark.
Chairman, Riley Sue. I have some opening remarks to make on behalf of the minority caucus. First, we congratulate our colleague on his nomination and also to say that we have noticed from the communication coming from the presidency that this time, the letter was duly signed by Mr. President himself. Suffice to state that there is no cabinet yet. So we want to draw the attention of Mr. President that in his letter, since there is no cabinet, he couldn't have copied secretary to cabinet. And we noticed from the letter that he's copied the Vice President Jubilee House, the Chief of Staff Jubilee House, and also the secretary to cabinet, there is none. Having said that, Chair, we also would want to express a view on some three important national issues.
Honorable Ranking, I recognize for the further.
Um, the constitution makes provision for a cabinet and then it makes provision for appointing ministers to fill the cabinet. So the cabinet exists as an institution and has its secretary as ministers are being appointed to that cabinet. So you cannot say that because the cabinet, which is made up of the ministers, is not yet fully constituted, that there is no secretary, that there is no secretary to cabinet. I've worked at the office of the president before and I know that there's an office there that is the cabinet's office that will usually have a secretary. And for records purposes, documents have to be copied them so that they keep the records. So please, this level of trying to belittle everybody and create an impression that people don't know what they are about must stop. And secondly, I see that you are about to read a copious press conference and I have an objection to that. First one to order two, six, seven, one and two.
Honorable Ayaga, your first point is well taken.
Yes.
We cannot preempt what you will say in his remaining remarks that you have to do. So I agree with you that, that cabinet exists as an, an office, so in the constitution and whatever letter that you are writing, at least you should make provision for a copy to be given to that particular office. So honorable ranking member, may you proceed with your.
Chairman.
Are you on a point of order?
Yes, please, on what Honorable Ayaga said.
What is your point of order?
Yes, let me refer to my colleague to Article seventy-six of the constitution on the establishment of a cabinet. It says that there shall be a cabinet which shall consist of the president and vice president and not less than ten and not more than nineteen ministers of state. Two, the cabinet shall assist the president in the determination of general policy of the government. Three, talks about there shall be a cabinet, a secretary to the cabinet who shall be appointed by the president. As we speak, all appointments duly made by the president has been communicated to the country. We don't know of any appointed secretary to the cabinet as envisaged under the constitution. So if a letter is written to the speaker and copied to the secretary to the cabinet, who is unknown, so it's right for the leader, minority leader to have raised that we don't have a secretary to the cabinet duly appointed in accordance with the constitution. We don't have to, we know there's a secretary, but who is the secretary to the cabinet? Who was copied? So, so let's agree and move. We are talking about the secretary to the cabinet, who was, who was copied in the.
Honorable, honorable members, I think from the discussion, the constitution is very clear that there shall be a cabinet, there shall be a secretary. And if, if cabinet exists and a letter is written, copied cabinet, I, I, I do not see anything wrong if such a letter is copied to that particular institution. I think it is in line with our normal practice that a copy of the letter. So honorable members, can we make progress? Is it on the same issue? No, honorable, honorable people, I do not think we should spend so much time on this issue. I am minded to give the floor to the ranking member to proceed, to proceed. Honorable Chief Whip, honorable Chief Whip. I am minded, no, I am minded to give the floor to your leader to proceed with his comment.
But I have an observation to make, first one to what the, the, Mahama Ayaga said.
Honorable Chief Whip, I am minded to give, give the floor to minority leader.
No, me to speak, is that, is that it?
You will speak later.
No, I don't speak now.
Majority leader.
It's important, I speak. It's important, it's important. Yeah, so you should listen to me. But you should listen to me, in fact. No, you raise a matter which is not right. We cannot begin on this note. He made a point, if you just tolerate me just a minute, leader. He made a point that.
Honorable members, can we make progress?
Minority leader, no, no, I insist, I need to say this. He made a point.
Honorable members, can we make progress?
No, no.
Honorable minority leader, you have the floor.
We are members of this committee, respect us, respect my opinion, listen to me. What? No, what is that? Why? I respect the chair.
Every single statement, the difference between myself and you is that, here and see that, you've forgotten, here and see that, here and see that, we are here. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm saying that nobody has any right to make any comment except that he's given the opportunity to do so by the speaker. When you gave your ruling, that should be the friend Honorable Afengamarkins. He, this is his fourth time I came to parliament with, with him. I expect him to, he understands the rules, he has been the majority leader, he should be the last person who should be engaged in disregarding the rules governing the conduct of members of parliament, most of members of this committee. So I urge him, I urge him, if he has any comment to make, he can do so after we have, we have even, you know, we left this particular process, he can do so. He would have the opportunity to make his closing remarks, he would have the opportunity to ask his questions. But we have spent more than one hour here, more than one hour, we have not even gone into the, 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 the resume, if like of the person, nothing. So I would urge my good friend Honorable Afengamarkins. Thank you very much, Honorable, Honorable Muntala. The point is well taken. Honorable ranking member. No, you see, honorable, honorable Brian Hachampung. Honorable, honorable members, order. I apologize to him because I've not invented my mind to the list before me and by adventing my mind to the list, he is here in his capacity as a leader for the Subject Matter Committee, which is roads and highways. That is why I have given him the floor to speak. Honorable members, the issue on the floor is that honorable ranking and minority leader use unparliamentary language to which rudely interrupted, which is. which is similar to what Abak Bencha has done the day of our very first sitting. He was asked to withdraw and apologize. Similarly, taking a lesson from that, having used the same word, I am urging upon him to honorably withdraw the unparliamentary language apology and let's make progress.
Chairman. The context of the use of the phrase rudely interrupted did not, did not amount to disrespect. No, no, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. Chairman, you see, Chairman, you see, we all keep our calm, but you don't look to your rights. You know what is happening to your rights, please, please, Chairman. The, the rate at which I get interrupted is very unacceptable. However, if as you sit to my right as a chair, you feel that the phrase is unacceptable, I think that is appropriate, that same is taken back. And to express my key concern to you that the rate at which I am being interrupted is unacceptable. Chairman, having said that, I would want to say that the purpose for which.
So honorable members, the word rudely interrupted should be expunged from the record.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Chairman, uh, that said, I believe that you called off the meeting to enable us address a few issues. We, we had gone into caucus for just five minutes and we were to come back to you so that we resolve the matters, the reason you call off the meeting, so that we make progress. Chairman, I would plead with you, I will plead with you that the approach should be such that all of us will be satisfied, all of us will be satisfied. There was a good reason for you saying that we should suspend it. Without engagement, you came in to, 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 to start the meeting. Chairman, I would want to urge upon you to let us resolve the matter and then have a peaceful start.
Thank you, thank you very much. But Honorable Minority Leader and then Rankin, with all due respect, we have a relationship. The meeting was suspended for five minutes, particularly for you and I to engage. I took the lead outside, waiting for you. Honorable Brian Achampung, you are being interruptive. I don't expect this from you. I don't expect this from you. Please, former minister, I don't expect this from you. When, when I walk out, I was waiting for you. You did not come to tell me anything. I only heard that you want two minutes and have waited there. When the public is aware that I have given five minutes, I've therefore decided to resume duty after the expiration of the five minutes. That was what really happened. So honorable members, with all due respect, the majority chief whip, minister designate for rules and highways have been sitting close to two hours. Can we make progress? With all due respect, can we make progress? The preliminary issues have taken close to two hours, which should not be the case. So Honorable Chief Whip, I plead with you to give me the opportunity to continue with the proceedings. You will have your turn very soon. So Honorable Shaibu, please proceed.
Mr. uh, Mr. Nominee, you may continue to answer the question, or if you want me to repeat it, that's fine. So I have stated clearly that a few years ago, your predecessor, the Honorable Amoakwata was in this very hall answering questions at his vetting. He intimated that one point five six billion Ghana C Ds was in the road sector debt that was left behind for them to clear. Uh, I trust that they would have cleared all by now. What is the status as we speak? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Once again, I thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to appear before them. Yes, the question asked by my respected colleague is something the whole country must pay attention to. Indeed, uh, in twenty seventeen, our respected colleague, who is no longer a member of Parliament, uh, in his word, was alarmed by the fact that the N D C government was leaving a commitment debt of seventeen billion Ghana C D on, in the road sector and one point five billion C D that being certificate approved, which were not paid. At the transition, uh, committee, it turns out that as of today, I've not been to the ministry yet, what the president said to the, to the committee, the N P P government is leaving a minimum of one hundred billion Ghana C D commitment. Uh, what you should be worried about though is that in that same document, uh, they are saying that certificates are unpaid as of today from G O G amounts to about twenty billion Ghana C Ds. The ones with road fund is about fifteen billion Ghana C D. What you should be more worried about, my brothers and sisters and colleagues listening to us from outside of this hall is that if you take the indebtedness up to twenty twenty-five, which is the road fund debt alone, out of the fifteen billion, look at these details. In twenty eighteen, we were owing about hundred and thirteen billion Ghana C D. The interest on the hundred and thirty million Ghana C D this year will be six hundred and sixty-five million Ghana C D. That debt was one thirteen. The interest on the one thirteen is six hundred and sixty-five million. When you take twenty nineteen, two hundred and ten million, the interest on the two hundred and thirty million is nine hundred and sixty million Ghana. Twenty twenty, we're owing four hundred and twenty-four million, the interest on the four hundred and twenty-four million is one point five billion. Twenty twenty-one, the debt was six hundred and sixteen million, the interest on that is currently one hun, one point six nine billion. Twenty twenty-two, six hundred and ninety-three million and currently one point four billion. The question is, how do I explain this to the taxpayers in Adakuru? That we owe hundred and thirteen million and the interest on the hundred and thirteen million is six hundred and sixty-five million? I believe the issues about the road sector concerns all of us. Everybody here wants better road to our communities. These are not monies that have been thrown away, but it's because of the way contracts are written in this country, which says that if somebody raises a certificate and you don't pay after a period of time, thirty percent interest accrues on it. So this, as a result of the thirty percent, we are made to pay one, fifteen billion on a, a road fund alone. The question is, the twenty billion that is doing, how do you call it, G O G, what will be the interest on that? Nobody knows. If the interest on four billion is, is together fifteen billion, imagine what it to be. So I believe the way forward, if I am approved by this house, is to sit down with the finance minister to see how we can deal with it. This cannot continue. This is not value to Ghana, this is not value to the contractor, this is money being wasted. We cannot accept that you owe somebody four billion and, and in this year, you are going to pay a total of fifteen billion, that is principal plus interest. This cannot continue. This is, this is something that the Ghanaian taxpayers. It means that today, if you collect ten billion tax today, you are going to give the ten billion tax as tax waivers, which is, not tax, like an interest which is nothing. So Honorable Chairman, this is a very serious matter and I want all countrymen and women to avert our minds to it. This is not about N D C or N P P. Like I said, these road projects are in our communities. So how we deal with it is something that must attract the attention of our country so that we put a stop to it. This is not sustainable. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Honorable Shaibu. By the rules, you have one follow-up question relating to the answer provided. Do you have any follow-up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So please proceed with your follow-up.
Honorable nominee, you have stated clearly that interest is one of the biggest problems that we have if you look at the composition of the debt. Understandably, you don't expect a contractor who has gone to borrow at fifty percent interest to do your work and then you expect him not to add whatever he has on it. So is it a question of contracting, which you intend to look at, or a question of looking for other sources of funding to pay off contractors as quickly as possible? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. It's both. Indeed, not every contract in our country attracts interest in terms of delays. So, and I also agree with you that when a contractor gets a project and he's encouraged to go and borrow money to execute that project and he goes to borrow money and he's paying interest, and when he raises certificate and it's not paid, of course, the bank is expecting him to pay the principal plus the interest. But what I'm saying is that this cannot continue. I don't know how the finance minister is going to fund this because I foresee easily a situation where he's going to have to find fifty billion. And out of that fifty billion, majority of that money is not work done in your community or my community, it's interest. And I don't think any of us will be happy with any of us. So the finance minister's responsibility would be to sit down with the sector ministers to deal with this unsustainable interest compounding, daily including today, so that we can make it possible for us to derive value for the monies we spend on our projects. Thank you, Chairman.
Very much, Honorable Chief Whip.
Okay, Chairman, thank you very much. Let me, um. Cheeweb, congrats. Um, I heard you quite well when you spoke to, at length, looking at the interest and debt that has accrued over the years. And you beautifully also added that when this house is gracious enough to approve you, you will sit with the finance minister. Uh, that was your first statement. And then you also wondered how the finance minister will navigate in the face of the difficulties. I also know you have been ranking on the rules committee for a while. If you put all together, you should be telling us solutions. And being aware of all these challenges, what, what are some of the solutions you want to profess in the wake of the difficulties we have? Yes, we are all aware of the difficulties, the interests and all that. What are the solutions? I heard you on your political platform and all the good things you said, referencing your manifesto and all that. Tell us some solutions.
Thank you very much. I think it's a very important question. Um, first of all, whatever solutions we have, we still owe and we have to pay. That is why I reference the finance minister to start with. How is he going to raise the money? I don't know at the moment. It is his responsibility to raise the money. But I think additionally, uh, what we should be doing is to sit down with the industry players, contractors and the agencies that are awarding road contract, we need to sit down with them. The way we contract, the way we write some of the contracts have to be reviewed. Government itself need to take a, a step back to find out whether it is appropriate to keep awarding projects when no one knows where the projects are going to be financed. Take the twenty twenty-four budget, go to capital expenditure section. You may realize that the entire amount there that is for capital, uh, expenditure at the road sector may not be more than four billion Ghana C D. Yet, this year alone, or last year alone, the quantum of projects awarded is probably three, four, fourfold. So why is it possible to award projects four times what has been allocated for you, for you in the budget? So it is something we need to work out with. And the easiest way to do with this is to sit down with the industry players, the contractors and awarding agencies to come up with something that does not actually make the contractor worse off because we want to build their capacity and they are also businessmen that are employing people. And also make it possible for government to be able to pay for what we are actually contracted to do between ourselves and the contractors. So the synergy between these should be able to find us a solution that is more sustainable than what we have currently. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Lida.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up question. Mr. Chairman. Honorable Kwame Govins Abuja. Congratulations.
Thank you, boss.
Mr. Chairman. The nominee happens to be my chief whip. I've worked with him closely for two years. I know his competence and he's one person I can vouch for his competence at any point in time. As Chairman, in his answer, he said so far the immediate past government, the N P P government, has left behind contracts worth hundred billion C Ds. Contract, commitment, it's contract, commitment is contract. So you don't just commit, you commit through contracts. So contracts through hundred billion C Ds. And apart from that, you have twenty billion Ghana C Ds being unpaid certificates, G O G, and fifteen billion Ghana C Ds unpaid certificate at the road fund. Hundred twenty fifteen, one thirty-five billion Ghana C Ds. The national budget appropriations is just in excess of two hundred billion C Ds. In excess of two hundred billion C Ds. One thirty-five is approximately sixty-something percent of the whole budget, including wages, salaries and everything, debt service and everything. Are you trying to say that we should cede the whole budget to the road sector? Vis a vis what has been left behind because of what the previous government has left behind? Previous government has left behind. The total road sector commitment and arrest is just enough to, for a whole year's budget. Is, is that what you are trying to say?
Uh, Chairman, uh, the situation is even worse than that. The hundred billion commitment, because these projects, some of them are designed and built. Let me give you an example, on your, on the, on the way to your own constituency. The rehabilitation and upgrading of Kasua to Akoti Road. The contract sum is about one billion Ghana C D, that's lot one. And then that is kilometer zero to kilometer twelve. Akoti to Winneba, that leads to the respected minority leader's constituency. Uh, that one is nine hundred and eighty-seven, uh, million Ghana C D. The remark is that new figures to be agreed. What it means is that these figures are not stable. So the hundred billion I gave you is not cost to complete. This is the projected figure as of the time this report was prepared. So you would surely have to find extra money by the time you complete this project. So cost to complete will be more than this. Do I expect you to hand over the national budget to me? No. Because education, healthcare, even the salaries of teachers and ourselves has to be paid as, as item one, I think. That is why I think the way out is to sit down. Maybe, maybe everybody involved in this must be prepared to take some level of, of, of responsibility. How we do it, I will defer that to you as the finance minister. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, Honorable Nyako, please note it down as your substantive question. If, if, I will give you the floor very soon, very soon. Honorable Shaibu, your second substantive question.
Chairman, most grateful. Honorable Nominee, one fine evening, where I seated and the. where I sat there and a minister of state writes a letter asking that all toll booths and bridges be suspended without recourse to parliament. First of all, I want to know your take, legal or illegal, and what are the consequences? Then secondly, what is your position on the reintroduction of the toll booths? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The issue of road toll is a matter that has attracted national attention. Our side has been consistent. I must take this opportunity to actually commend a former colleague in this house, Honorable Edyomi. Some time ago, when Honorable, the former minister, Inusafuseni, was minister, the accruals to the road fund was just around two hundred and fifty million annually. We sat down and found out that we could enhance that, which means more money will be made available to improve our road. Honorable Edyomi was a ranking at that time. He worked with us and we worked with the Finance Minister. That is why you saw the road fund accruals increase in that year to one point two five billion and today is over two billion. When the issue of the road toll started, our side, Honorable, a former minority leader, together with me and the former road minister, Honorable Makwata, decided to caution government that do not cancel or suspend road toll. Let's rather find ways of plugging the leakages in terms of the collection and enhance it. Honorable Haruna and myself met Honorable Makwata and gave our commitment that don't cancel it. Indeed, we were surprised on the day the road toll, they claimed they zeroed it. For me, it was an act of illegality. Yes, they said it just zeroed it, but it was, a road fund has got an act, it's a law. So you couldn't unilaterally do that. As a result, I believe there was some level of negligence in the way it was done. They claimed road toll, road toll was accruing only about eighty million. But today, there are contractors working for government of Ghana who are owed five thousand cedis within the roadside. Can you imagine how many roadside with clearance would be paid with eighty million? So they canceled it and our side consistently stood on principle and said, bring the road toll back. Yes, the road toll is coming back, but not in the form of building obstructions on the road for drivers to stop and somebody taking money from them. It will be coming back based on a technological platform that make it fair and that make it easy to collect, easy to account for and for the public to know what the money is actually being used for. Together with the road minister, we shall come out with a policy as to how that will be done. That is my response.
Honorable Mahamad Shaibu, any follow-up?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Nomini. I'm glad you mentioned mechanization because one of the biggest challenge is to leave parliament at eight o'clock, then go and queue on the motorway for another two hours just to pay road toll. Glad you mentioned mechanization. How about the disabled who were fully and gainfully employed at the tolls? Will mechanization be a part of the structure that will bring them on or you want to leave them out completely? Thank you.
Not at all. I happen to be in touch with some of the former toll booth workers. And they visited me, my colleagues on the road committee, including my respected ranking, Honorable Osay, knows that we've been meeting them. Some of them have moved on, looking for different jobs, but we know some of them are there. If we're going to run this on a new technological platform, we need to find out how many of them can actually participate, if they need retraining or whatever role they can play. So indeed, if it's coming back, we should be able to provide opportunity for some of those who have got experience in working in the toll booths. Though there will not be toll booths, if we can re-engage them in other sectors, we should be able to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Shaibu, you have the last substantive question, if any.
Most grateful, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Nomini, can you just give us a fair idea of what the road network, the quantum, the mileage is as of today and what you intend to do to improve on the road network in Ghana?
Chairman, the data from the road legencies put unconfirmed data of close to hundred thousand kilometers. That is the road network in various stages. Half of that is more trouble. When I say more trouble, it doesn't mean they are all sealed, but there are roads you can drive on. The other half is not in a state that is very good, so we need to work on them. Indeed, there are various degrees of road. The roads leading to farms don't have to be at the need. And find out, first of all, how we make roads more trouble. Sometimes, if you check, some roads basically need spot improvement. That is, a section is in a degradable state. Go and fix that one within a reasonable time, especially before the rain start. If you leave it, it becomes a major problem. So what we'll be doing is to take a holistic review of the road network and see what we can do to make quick interventions to those sections that are the worst and gradually bring it up to meet those that are in a better condition.
Thank you very much. Any follow-up?
Chairman, I wish the nominee all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chief Whip.
Honorable, my good friend, Cheweb, on the toll, I'm happy how informed you are. And I can testify, number of discussions I've had with you personally and your professional advice you've professed. But I, I, I'm not a prophet of doom, though I anticipate you are going to have difficulty. Because you have stood on political platform to say, oh, Ghanaians are suffering, cost of living is high and all, blah, 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 blah. Of some levy or tax against all the things you've told Ghanaians. Don't, be careful you don't attract the anger of the President. Because the President has said that the price of K K is going to reduce. The price of, export price of petrol is going to go down. So my, my real concept...
Honorable Chief Whip, what has the price of K K got to do with the issue? And the reference?
So I, I have a lot of sympathies. The young handsome Adaklu, Member of Parliament, Agwabli, very successful, Cheweb, how are you going to balance the scale? You are introducing a levy, a tax, and yet, your party, who has won to become constituent government, has said that cost of living is going to go down. Would your levy reduce cost of living or to rather increase it? And how are you going to have the confidence to introduce it?
Thank you very much, Chairman. The, the good thing is that the reintroduction of road toll was part of what we put before the people of this Ghana, this country, which led to this emphatic victory. They are actually expecting us to reintroduce road toll and make sure the accruals go to improve the conditions on our road. I have never met any driver who says, I don't want to pay road toll. What I hear them say all the time is, we are paying the road toll. How could they? We are using this money to improve the conditions on our road. I am sure they will be able to accommodate. However, you are also aware that when my boss, the majority leader, took the chair here, he suggested some of the draconian taxes that are going to be removed in his first budget. Those savings would make more meaning to the ordinary Ghanian. E levy is going, and it's a promise the President has made and it is going. And I'm sure your constituents are going to be happy to see e levy go. Betting tax is going, and I'm sure the young people in your constituency are going to be happy to see betting tax go. So I know you mean well, together in the House and together with my colleague, Honorable Osay Nyako and the rest of the committee, we are going to work together to make sure the reintroduction of the road toll, together with the Ministry of Finance, makes sense, it's fair, it is collected fairly and also it is applied to things that matter to the people of this country. Thank you.
All members, it's now the turn of Honorable Kennedy Osay Nyako. Subject matter, committee member.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Nomini, congratulations. You and I have come a long way. He happens, he happens to be my, my ranking. And today, he has been nominated to go and hold, go and hold a ministry that he, at the time, as a ranking, was vociferous and wanted to see things done right. I only wish you well and I hope you're going to do exactly what you had believed in whilst you were holding government feet on fire. And I have a few questions for you. Just a quick one. I want to understand, what is the difference between commitment of the ministry and the indebtedness? I want you to explain that one for me.
Okay, so commitment is basically all the road projects that are active, not completed. So we put a figure, the easiest way is to put the contract sum together, that is the commitment. So if you are budgeting, you need to put money aside, knowing very well this year, twenty percent of road number one will be raised. So we put money aside through the Finance Minister. The debt is what is due to be paid. That is certificates cleared by consultants, either third-party consultants or agency, feeder roads, highways, urban road. That means that you should be writing a cheque to the contractors or transferring money to them. So that is the difference. One is work on site or yet to be done or certified. The other one is certified work. That is the difference between commitment and debt.
You say that the...
Is it a supplementary or substantive? Supplementary, very well.
Did I hear you say that the areas, the current certificate unpaid is fifteen billion? Did you say that?
Not fifteen billion, GOG. Based on documents provided to the transition team, GOG is in excess of twenty billion. And then, as you and I know, there are main, two main sources of payment to contractors in this country, road fund and GOG. And most contractors these days, in the past, it used to be people wishing their projects are under road fund because accruals are unknown. But since the days of the capping of the road fund, and if I tell you the road fund story here, it's a very sorry story. Most contractors wish their projects are funded by GOG because then the Finance Minister is the one who pays. So GOG is currently about twenty billion and interest plus capital for road fund is what is fifteen billion.
Any further question?
Yes, Honorable Nomini. Have you cited the presidential transition report on roads? And are you familiar with the figures in terms of certificates that is pending for the ministry to pay in terms of areas? Have you cited it?
The interesting thing about certificates is that even if you were to go to the ministry today and they give you a sum of money as money they owe, in the morning, in the afternoon, you could find a different figure because contractors are working twenty-four seven and are raising certificates on daily basis. So they could, they always say, this is as of the time they give us. So that is why I'm saying to you, from the document we cited, from the transition team, which is a ministry document, the figures are what are put out. It could end up being more than this or unless maybe they paid some huge amounts of money before producing this document, then it could be slightly less.
Any, any further question? No. This is, please, the rule is that you ask one substantive question and you ask a follow-up. So this... So if you have done to, yes, yes, no, you have a substantive question and a follow-up. Please, your last substantive question.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, Honorable Nomini, you and I know that the, the biggest challenge for the road ministry is in terms of funding gap. That is why each and every year, they present their budget of about sixteen or even sometimes beyond billion, but they ended up having only four billion. You are knowledgeable in that area. You have in-depth knowledge of the issues. What do you plan practically to do to address this funding gap issue that has bedeviled this ministry and making, making the work at the ministry a very difficult one? What do you plan to do?
Yes, Chairman, my respected ranking and a good friend is right. From the matrix we have seen over the years, we have always argued that for us to be able to make a good impact on the road interventions, the country must be generating and setting aside between six to ten billion cedis of our own money, not borrowed money. How do we fund this? If you speak to the former Minister of Roads and Highways, Honorable Makwata, you are aware, we were close to having a national dialogue on how to fund roads and make it open to Ghanaians. How much can we pay to be able to get the quality of roads we, we, we need? Unfortunately, that engagement never took place before he left. And the new minister, our colleague in parliament, Honorable Senso, was also in the process. So there's a cohort of people who believe that we should engage Ghanaians on how we fund roads. Together with the committee and the Minister of Finance, I think we should be playing to Ghanaians. We need to open up the discussion about how we fund roads in our country and make sure whatever agreement we have, the monies are applied. I have argued, and you know, know about it, when we tell people, pay road tolls and the people pay road tolls and you take more than half of that money to do free SHS. If you want money for free SHS, ask for money for free SHS. I'm not saying free SHS is non-necessary, but when you take money for road, apply that money for road interventions. So as long as we can do this and be open and honest to Ghanaians, whatever they agree, we apply to the roads and then we can get some improvement. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, your last supplementary question.
Yes, Honorable Nomini, will you consider adopting a negligence liability period in our road contract to ensure that contractors who does shoddy jobs are taken on and ensure that they do the right thing? Will you consider that?
Chairman, there are various reasons why we see what we call shoddy works on our roads. Many things account for that. Sometimes it's not even the, the knowledge of the contractor. Indeed, there is always that twelve-month defect liability period on construction project. But sometimes, especially if you watch Ashfar takeover league, it embellishes the problem so neatly for few months that you may never know what is beneath. But after a few months, you realize that it has failed completely. Not only the contractors. I'm an architect by profession. If I practice elsewhere outside this country, the employer insists I take professional indemnity insurance before I touch his or her work. I.e., so if the work fails, insurance before I touch his or her work, i.e. so if the work fails, he can draw on the professional indemnity to get some, some compensation. Is it time for consultants taking on huge government contracts to take the appropriate indemnity to cover the services they are providing? Because the Ghanaian doesn't understand why you would do a project in his backyard, a road to say, and six months the rain, the rain washes the whole thing away and then we are looking for another money to come and start. So it will be a combination of these things. I've heard people talk about increase the defect liability period to twenty-four months. That will not necessarily solve the problem. The problem is that we need to build the capacity and put some of the risk on the back of the consultants and others, but also to encourage government to pay contractors and consultants on time to be able to execute the works within schedule.
Honorable Nominie, I wish you well.
Thank you very much. It's now the turn of Honorable Ma.
Thank you, Chairman. My good friend Kwame, Honorable Kwame Abajia, congratulations. I, I have a question on funding, especially having listened to you about a huge... Thank you, thank you, thank you for collecting. Haven't listened to you about the huge indebtedness in the road sector. How do you intend to meet the expectations of Ghanaians, especially the new roads that we expect you to construct, particularly the Eastern Corridor, beginning from the Temamoto all the way to Yendi? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I acknowledge that I come into this role with huge expectation, starting from colleagues. On record, the Road Minister answers the largest number of questions in parliament, more than any minister. And I must commend Honorable Makwata for that diligence. As long as he's available on Fridays, he'll come and answer the questions. And I used to tease him that as for answering the question, he will answer. As of whether he will do the road is another matter because of the same thing you are talking about. Well, the president who appointed me has made one solemn promise, that is to be candid with the people of our country. So wherever we are doing anything, you let the people know. Indeed, we are not going to find it easy to satisfy everybody in terms of how quickly the road leading to the places we live are done. But what we are committed to is to make sure that whatever resources we have and apply to the road, to the road interventions will make sure everybody understands what is in the kitty and what we, we, we can get. When my, my boss, the majority leader sat in this chair, he painted another figure, which is something we should all be thinking about. As you know, as part of the debt restructuring, government postponed a chunk of our repayment or interest until this year. One bullet payment was just done a few weeks ago when the former finance minister told us that there are bigger ones ahead of us that we must clear. So we would spend whatever is available to be spent on the road. But as to where we find the money, that is the responsibility of the finance minister to, to carry. My job is to package projects, make sure they are, they meet value for money and his job is to fund it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more question? Yes, if a follow-up, you are entitled to.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Nominie, would you consider new funding methods, at least for us to have either VOT or PPP roads from Accra to Kumasi, where individuals or road users will be paying using, per usage, something like the one we have in the developed country, ten pikes? So that it can help us speed up transportation network in Ghana.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I gave an indication regarding that when I spoke about the reintroduction of road toll, but I know funding would go beyond just road tolls. And so we are going to consider all those things, including other sources. But like I said, it is not for me to state all the sources that would accrue to road funding. That is the job of the, the finance minister. I was happy you mentioned Eastern Corridor as one of the things the president actually committed to. It's a, a project in six lots. I think half or so have been done. But from the motorway, actually, okay, you and Odeya, my colleagues, we approved a loan to a company called Inzag. I'm, I'm, I'm sure they all got caught up in the debt restructuring. So if you go there, the contractors appear to be working, but the rate at which they are working isn't encouraging. So we have our work cut out to make sure we turn things around and we are committed to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. You are done. Thank you. You want one more, then your last question?
Thank you. Mr. Nominie, the Pres- President Akufado disclosed in his twenty-twenty-three State of the Nation address that his government has constructed eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four kilometers of new road. I come from a rural constituency, Zabzuku. We have a lot of road challenges. I don't see it and I want to find out from you. Is this true?
May, Mr. Chairman, yes, I remember the president appearing in the house as part of his constitutional mandate to update the house on what is happening in the country. And he made us aware of a certain figure of, at that time, new roads. It wasn't pleasant to try to contradict the president because his sources of information are better than mine, but the figure eleven thousand just jumped out as new roads. And my side said that was a bit less than the truth. Since then, the agencies under the Road Ministry attempted to adjust the figure as part of the transition. And you remember our view was that only six hundred and seventeen kilometers of roads were new roads so to stay at the time. At the transition, they provided details. At the time of the transition, the new roads constructed is six hundred and seventy-three, which is not far from the six hundred and seventeen we talked about at that time because it means that few more routes have been completed. So that issue is in a record of the, of parliament that indeed Ghana did not construct eleven thousand kilometers of new roads since twenty-seventeen, rather six hundred and seventy-three kilometers have been constructed as new roads. The bulk of the work in the thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty-four point two-five kilometers is re-graveling and graveling. That is six thousand one hundred and eighty-five point nine zero kilometers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. It is now the turn of Muntala Mohammed, a subject matter committee. Honorable members, I am dealing with nine, nine on my right and six on my left. I am mindful of the standing order in two-one-seven-seven to admit to the leadership, but that one will not also make it one-one. So allow me to chair and balance.
We will allow you. In fact, we will not just allow you, we will help you to, 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 to lead and chair. But Suga had already prompted you that, and in this house, you go to your left and then you come to your right, even though we are not seated as we, we, we often, we sit in the chamber. I had prompted you of an extraction made by the deputy whip. So Suga, if you may indulge me, you have gone there. If you may allow the deputy whip to have a bite and then you are not the chairman. Are you the chairman? Muntala, are you the chairman? You are, you are not even a member of the committee.
Honorable Chief Whip, I have numbers before me.
Yes.
Which I will have to balance. So I'm saying that on this occasion, I'm taking two and then coming back to, I will, I will balance the number whoever you speak.
Are you going by any ratio?
Able to speak. Yes, yes, certainly, certainly, certainly.
It will not last. It will not last.
Honorable Muntala, you have the floor. Order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Nominie, congratulations. My ques- question is simple. In your first year, will you concentrate on completing the abandoned routes or incomplete routes or you do it alongside with awarding new contracts? And I ask this question because there are several rules that have been working on for several, they say Corridor One, for example. I, I have an interest because if the road is completed, it takes me lesser time to travel from Accra to my constituency in Temali and it opens up the place. And also there are some rules in Temali township that are not, you know, completed. So I want to know whether you will concentrate in completing those incomplete rules or some of them abandoned or you would do that alongside with new rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The president has already given an indication that he will complete ongoing projects. So we have made that commitment and we intend to follow that. But I can foresee a situation where out of need, we may have to start some new projects to address urgent issues. But the first year, our commitment will be to focus on critical road projects which have been abandoned, to make them more durable for the use to which it was originally intended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that's a follow-up. Or I should finish before he comes?
Please, continue.
Okay. My second question, how do you intend to, to fund the ten billion big push that President Muhammad Endi intends to do? Because that is going to have a huge, you know, the cost is huge. How do you intend to, to fund it?
Chairman, the big push is President Muhammad's big intervention on infrastructure. As a sector minister for roads and highways, it is my responsibility, as I said, to identify critical road projects, package them after design and everything, make sure it meets the required value for money features and present them to the Minister of Finance for financing. As we are all aware, the big push is a four-year, ten billion dollar proposal. The projects that will go into this basket of projects ought to be cutting-edge and the ones that make significant intervention in whichever sector. So they are not necessarily road projects worth ten billion. They are just big, significant infrastructure projects worth ten, ten billion. So equates to about two point five billion annually for, for the four years.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, a follow-up on that.
There's a follow-up on that. Then you can ask your follow-up question. Then I will recognize the...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think the challenge that confronts us in this country on the matter of spending such huge sums of money in road construction is the durability or how long those roads last. We have had complaints where contractors finish with the road, the road is commissioned and by one year you find potholes on the roads. You know, as a minister, taking into consideration the amount of money that government intends to spend on that, what measures are put in place to ensure that the quality of the rules that are to be constructed using this money is something that is of tremendous interest to you and concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Industry players would put a few factors as the reason the roads fail. Two days ago, I was getting a briefing to the effect that even the materials we use in some countries, the bitumin that is used on their road are produced by themselves. So the engineers determine the composition. If you watch in our country, even some contractors buy bitumin in drums imported from somewhere. Nobody is able to determine whether this bitumin is good for our climate. So the materials we use, the design of the road, the supervision, one issue facing the road agencies, some agencies have, which are supposed to be an engineering outfit, which requires civil engineers, mechanical engineers, county surveyors have more administrative staff than engineers. So you could see a, an engineer supervising a project and the capacity is not even there for her, him or her to be able to do this in reasonable time. So we ought to work on the staffing of the road agencies to have the qualified staff. I've also seen document that suggests that some of the agencies, the level of the new engineers, the current engineers, compared to when they will retire, there's going to be a gap because we are not giving, recruiting new engineers to be trained enough before they exit. So it will be a combination of how we select materials, the design, the, the capacity of the contractors and also government's ability to pay contractors expeditiously when works are done. When contractors work, they are not paid, they vacate the site and you pay them some time. What happens is that once the money is not theirs, the bank takes the money, they, you can't actually know whether they've gone to the site to do anything. So to be able to deal with this matter, we should address it on all fours. Otherwise, we will see what we are seeing, where you spend four billion on a project and then ten billion as interest on, 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 on that four billion. It's unacceptable and not sustainable.
Thank you. I, I recognize...
No clarity on the point he made and I think it's important.
Please, Honorable, Honorable Muntala, go ahead and I will come through to you.
Honorable Minister Nominie, the issue of the quality of, of manpower that you use, you give an example that sometimes people are recruited to work in areas where they don't have the expertise, particularly the engineers. Are you going to engage more engineers or more technical people for specific portfolios or you want to build the capacity of the existing ones? Because I do know that there are some who may not necessarily be engineers. An example is planning. You and I, you know, we all went to the same department. You go to the assemblies, you have people who are not planners but who have been trained to do works that are supposed to be done by planners equally in the, in the road sector. Is it an issue that you, you will build the capacity of those who have been engaged?
Thank you very much. Honorable Nominie, your response?
Yes, I think a combination of both. And fortunately, Ghana has one of the best training institutes at Kofuridia where they train, in-house training. Even members of parliament, we do get some capacity building sometimes in, within our committees to be able to be effective. So indeed, those in the service already need, I mean, to update their knowledge, but critically, we need to recruit new engineers and give them that capacity so that we can have a good number of people deployed on the almost four thousand different construct, road projects are going on at the same time across the country.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chief Whip.
Thank you, Chair, for recognizing me. Honorable Hip, I'm asking this question not to question your competence at all, far from that. I know you very well. I know you can do the job. However, I hear and often I've heard colleagues on the other side brandishing ten million dollars push, you are holding as a... push, you are holding us a low, a low, yes, 10 billion dollars, you are, you are holding us a low lime fruit. Now, my question to you, my good friend S. You've already shown some regret, the extent of, the depth, the situation of the depth, which you have regretted well enough and we've heard you loud and clear. You've also said that you will sit with the finance minister to be in the context of the situation you have at hand. Now, how would you draw the balance of implementation in terms of the 10 billion, mind you, is not only for roads, broad spectrum infrastructure? So you have so-called abandoned roads and then people of Adakuru also come to you after you have been approved. I know you are aware of that and you will be coming to the House more often than any minister to answer questions. You are, you are aware of that. How would you draw the balance? So-called abandoned roads and new urgent road needs that also need to be attended to. Don't forget, you have already said that there is no money and then you are also going to work closely with the so-called, the, the finance minister.
Honorable Members, Honorable Members, I drew the attention of the House to the fact that for a stated reason I asked Amashia to be here. So if any friend of the committee will not remain in silence, then I will be forced to apply the rules. Please, 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 Honorable Members. Please, Honorable Yusef.
You see, I'm just talking about your big push and you are not tolerant to listen.
Honorable Kennedy, you say, let's listen to the questions being asked. Honorable Alasasowini, please.
Mr. Chair, so my good friend, Honorable Abuja, very passionate about the concerns of roads and the challenges. This big push, which I know you are very excited about and it finds good expression in your manifesto. Or you are nodding your head? No, my question is, how would you get the balance? We have roads in your own description and beautifully captured by Honorable Muthala, abandoned roads and then you also have new roads needs. How are you going to get the balance? Are you going to, already you have said that your first year, you focus on, my question is, how are you going to get the balance? Then again, I'm not done. Mr. Chairman, I'm not done.
Members, I want us to listen to the question in silence. But Honorable Chief Whip, this, Honorable Chief Whip, Honorable Chief Whip, Honorable Chief Whip, this is about the third or fourth time we are going to hear the word, how are you going to balance the new rules as against the abandoned rules? So if that is your question, put it to, so that he can proceed to answer the question. I beg you.
Speaker, with respect to you, I'm old enough to speak for myself. I only employ my colleagues to be tolerant. You had the opportunity, Honorable Muthala, I know you want to be seen on the screen and so that you can get attention with Mr. P.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Please, Honorable Muthala, you don't have the floor. Please, you don't have the floor.
No, no, no.
Please, please.
It's point of order.
Please. Honorable Chief Whip, Honorable Chief Whip.
It's point of order.
Go ahead and ask your question, please, Honorable Chief Whip, I'm begging you.
It's point, it's point of order.
Honorable Whip, so how do you get the balance? Abandoned, so-called abandoned roads and the new ones which may be of good importance? How are you going to get the balance? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it's point of order. It's important, it is, it is important you allow me to speak.
Honorable Muthala, you do not have the floor. I still insist that you don't have the floor. Ask your question.
Yeah, Chairman, my colleague, a very good friend, Minority Whip, is right and let me state it again. The projects that we are going to prepare for big push are not for abandoned projects, small, small projects. I already said, they are the key big intervention projects. For instance, there has been on the drawing board for some time, an orbital around Accra, which goes Chopoli all the way to Bojumbura. That project, over 100 kilometers of road, makes a significant intervention in terms of traffic management within the Accra itself. That project ought to be prepared properly, costed, make sure value for money is done and then presented to the finance minister for, for funding. At the same time, it is the responsibility of finance ministry to continue funding projects that are on-site. So big push is not about completing the projects already on-site, but the major intervention project that can actually pay for itself, that can actually make huge impact on the country. So that is the, the difference. So we're not going to stop ongoing projects. The President has already made a commitment to that. However, the big push projects are dedicated and significant projects that are not going to be rushed, that are going to be done effectively so that all Ghanaians will get the impact of those projects. So that is the difference between the big push basket of projects which are yet to be developed and ongoing projects.
Thank you very much, Honorable Muthala. Do you have any more question? You are entitled to one last question. It is now the turn of Honorable Kofi Marfo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate my ranking, who is now the chief whip. I want to congratulate him for his nomination. I, I heard him saying that for him, the 100 billion debt, the 20 billion and then the 15 billion and then 665 million interest, for him, he consider that part as waste of funding. I want to ask him, when he said wasted funds, I want to ask him, what does he mean by that?
Thank you, my good friend, I call you Kofi, but today, Honorable Kofi Marfo. The reason I say it's a wasted fund is this. If we owe 113 million and because we are unable to pay, the interest on the 113 million is now 665 million. What it means is that the 665 million is a waste to the people of this country because that money is not 665 million Ghana city worth of roadworks. It's just the 30% compounding interest on the unpaid certificate. That is what it is. Ghanaians get 113 million worth of road but they pay extra 665 million, extra money for nothing, as interest. There can't be a waste bigger than that. And I'm not saying it's peculiar, it only started today. It is the way road construction contracts are put together in this country. There's something wrong with it. It is not the fault of even the contractors because I, earlier I said, they borrow money to do this work. If we were to pay them on time, there wouldn't have been the interest compounding. So I don't even blame them because the 665 doesn't even go to them. Perhaps they borrowed money from the bank and they have to give them that money back to the, the bank. So the only weakness in this case might be the banks. But is the road ministry supposed to be a source of good business for a bank this way? Yes, they can be good business, but not in this format. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Your second question or you have a follow-up?
A follow-up. Yeah, Mr. Nomni, yes, I, I want to ask you, if you become the minister, what are you going to do differently?
Yes, okay.
So that that 60, 665 million wasted funds will be, will, will not be there.
Well, the, my answer to that, I've already provided that as for payment, it is the Minister of Finance's job to find the money. But what I can do to help and as I stated earlier, is to bring together the stakeholders, contractors and everybody. I am sure if we were to call contractors and sit down with them and say, look, this debt, frankly speaking, the finance minister who is the leader of the House has already stated, if all the taxes we collect is 200 million, a billion, you can't hand over all that to just one ministry. And if you keep that money on the books, it keeps getting worse. So maybe, maybe, we need to sit down with all the stakeholders to see where we cut our losses. Do we agree with them? We pay you off a certain amount of money. If you owe a bank, we can draw the bank in. After all, did we not see the whole country try to negotiate debt that is owed even individuals? So I think that the time has come for us to bring together all players in the road sector to see how we can make this sustainable. You see, if government keep owing and we are not paying, we are not even a better customer to the contractor. That is why today you call some contractors, want to award them the work, they will tell you it's better to sleep than to take the job because they take the job and he's got debt on his head. So we need to make construction attractive business to recruit and give employees and everything. At the moment, that is not happening. So we'll sit down with the stakeholders to see, maybe the committee can get involved as we recall the stakeholders and chart a new path. Surely, this is not sustainable, we can't continue this way.
Thank you. Any further question?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Nomni, I want to find out from you. This capping and decapping has become capping. Tell me, how are you going to decap this particular road fund that has been capped?
Yes, you are right. I've been an advocate of decapping statutory funds, especially road fund. I, I worked out something. When you see the amount of money collected into the road fund and amount of money released to them and the one that government pays at GOG, it turns out that basically the finance ministry just take part of the road fund and keep it and give it back to them as GOG funds. So in other words, they don't actually put in much money of themselves. I would still continue to advocate for the road fund to be decapped because it is better for you, them to have that money and pay off contractors that they owe to stop the compounding interest than to keep on capping, taking away more than 50% of their money and then the problem stays with all of us. So I'll continue to advocate for decapping of road fund.
Thank you very much. Next question. Probably your last question.
Yes, my last question. Mr. Nomni, you were on record as saying that 240 million was used, 240 million dollars was used for E-gate. Immigration Service came out to the banquet stating that they spent 1.7 million dollars. I want to find out, do you still hold on to the 240 million claim or you agree with Migration Service?
Thank you very much, my good friend. Actually, I spoke in context and the rebuttal by Immigration Service, I didn't see how that is a rebuttal. I see it as even a confirmation of what I said. Because in effect, what they have said is that they were talking about the total cost, the lifecycle cost of the project, which is what? 297 million instead of the 240 million. So I was wondering what kind of rebuttal is that? That I alleged that you were doing something for 240 and you come out to confirm that you were doing it for 297. But the difficulty for Ghana Immigration Service is that they probably don't know what they were doing. Indeed, the, the few physical immigration, I mean, E-gates that were planted could cost 1.7 million Ghana city. But if government had listened to what I was saying, it wouldn't have resulted into some of the embarrassment we saw at the airport when the Vice President was trying to commission it, the former Vice President. If I were to tell you today that there is not even any contract for the E-gate, there is no contract. So what, the seven, the seven, the 1.7 million they were talking about, there is no contract and they didn't know. I'm a ranking, I have information. This is a letter signed, this is a memo from the Ministry of Finance. When I started, when I started talking, do you know what they did? This memo is dated 19th March 2024. And what is the memo saying? Re submission of final proposal on the development of a national border management system. Are you aware that this project is already being implemented by Ghana Civil Aviation Authority? And the E-gate was supposed to be done for free. Why are we even supposed to pay 1 dollar for something that we are supposed to get for free? So when you see, when they started backtracking, do you know what they did? They now went and did this memo and the memo title I've given you and now they said...
Honorable Kennedy Nyako and Honorable Yusef, order.
Let me read to you. They said contract value 147 million, 765, 627 million dollars. Then they said contract duration 10 years, support and management fee 10%, support and maintenance fee 18%. I repeat, Ghana ought not pay even 1 dollar for the so-called E-gate project. In fact, whilst we were at the discussion, they were now at Ministry of Finance trying to do VFM for a project that has already been, been implemented. I am sure when the nominee for, not transport appears, you can get more details of that. So Immigration Service, you have basically confirmed my allegation that you have forgotten that the implementation of this rests in the domain of the Ghana Civil Aviation Authority. You have no business carrying out this and this is a UN Security Council resolution. It lies with Ghana Airport Company Limited. So I have not said anything that I need to depart from, but to repeat that, what they were doing was not right, there's no contract and it's no value for money.
Honorable Member, you have your last follow-up question.
Chairman, Chairman.
Do you have any?
Please, Chairman, with all respect to you, Chairman, with due respect, we have, that is why we have subject matter committee leadership. My colleague has indicated that is a matter he wants to correct, that Honorable Senya Akko. Would you, would you, would you, would you endure him just a minute, please?
Well, I indicated few minutes ago that when a procedure is set down for a right to be exercised, the procedure must be followed. I intimated to you that when a member has a follow-up question to ask, it is only after asking the follow-up question that another person can be given the opportunity. That is why I'm asking him whether he has a follow-up question or not. So it is after asking him that a different person can come. Whip, don't do this to create the impression that I am not being fair.
Speaker, I'm not saying, Speaker, with respect, respect. No, we will never say that you are not being fair. We have a responsibility to help you moderate this, this verdict. Speaker, exactly that's what we are doing. That is what, exactly what we are doing. We won't take anything away from you. Speaker, you know, you know, I would be fair to you on some of these matters.
The member who has the floor asking the question. I am asking whether he has the last supplementary question. So if he doesn't have, then again, use my discretion to give the floor to whoever I am supposed to give the floor.
Speaker, with respect, but where even that notwithstanding? What is that? I am not debating. I'm saying, I'm saying, please, would you listen? Listen to me.
Don't lecture anybody here. Please, defer to the Chairman. Defer to the Chairman, you are not the Chairman. Defere to the Chairman, you are not the Chairman.
You, you, you see, you are not tolerant.
Please, defer to the Chairman, you seem to be lecturing everybody. Defere to the Chairman.
We lecture.
Respect the Chair.
Yes, so our colleague is deferring.
You have made a request.
He's deferring.
You have made the request.
Look, I am the Chief, we have a responsibility to authorize my request.
Allow the Chairman to make the decision. Please, allow the Chairman to make the decision. So, Honorable Kofi Mahfou, you have exhausted all your questions. Now, Honorable Kennedy Osenyakoh, you want to clarify an issue. What is the clarification?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a few clarifications. When the Honorable Nomini stated that there wasn't any contract for the E-Gate, I am surprised. That is the first one. Second, he claimed that same project is being done by Civil Aviation Authority. These are two different projects. The E-Gate started, was started by the World Bank. They did a few ones, and at a point in time, there was no funding. So after the World Bank project, it was suspended. Now they find Ghana Immigration Service decided to find an innovative means to get the rest to be done. It is not, the cost of the project is not going to be borne by the government of Ghana. Passing years will be paid. They are going to pay for it, it's part of the thinking. And secondly, the API project.
Honorable Oda, I believe that Nomini is capable of dealing with the issue.
The airport passing year information project, which is being done by Civil Aviation Authority, is completely different from what the Immigration Service is doing. So I just want to put it on record. I don't know where he got this information from, but I believe some of this, we need to put it in a proper context, not to generate any kind of controversies.
Thank you very much. Honorable Nomini, any comment?
Yes, my good friend is a ranking currently, and he understands that we both have, both have deep understanding of what's happening at the airport. As part of UN Security Council Resolution, those of us who travel through some airports, let's take Singapore. You will notice that when you get to the airport, you don't meet any immigration officer. You take your passport, place it on the E-Gate, and it goes through. It is only when they have issues with you that they will direct you to a human being. Why? Because you are provided information already to the authorities in Singapore, and they've checked it, and you are okay. So he is right. When we talk about this, people think we are talking about initially, Immigration said it costs one point seven million CDs. It is an integrated project. If you read their press release, and I think Graphic published it, they confirmed that, yes, point number five, the E-Gate system alone comprises fifteen units of E-Gate with accessories, which form part of the border management system being installed at KIA at a cost of one point seven million dollars. Then if you go back, point number six, they then go on and say that the two hundred and forty million referenced in circulation in the article that they are referring to me on my social media handle relates to the whole cycle, a whole lifecycle cost. And the project, including the initial implementation, would cost ninety-four million dollars. Who says Ghanaians are not going to pay? If you take tax on, from Ghanaians on behalf of government, it's government money. Why is the entity, this particular entity believe that something that another entity is ready to do for free? And I'm repeating, this E-Gate integrated system is already part of what another entity is doing for free. The records are there. Go to, go to Ghana Airport, Ghana Civil Aviation Authority today and find out whether they have started implementing a project which would have provided the E-Gate for free and come and report to the committee. So this matter must be settled. And that is why I say that Ghana Immigration Service did not debunk me, they actually confirmed what I have said. I know exactly what I'm saying, and I would even encourage them. As far as the UN Resolution is concerned, US Security Council Resolution is concerned, it is the law that we have done for Ghana Civil Aviation Authority, that is what is supposed to be used to implement this. Immigration officials are only supposed to play a role. Second, it is also something that Ghanaians should look at. Today, we have over one thousand immigration officers working at the airport. Can you believe it? One thousand, one thousand immigration officers at Koduka Elu. Yes. It turns out some people have to go to work once every two weeks. So what is, what, I'm not saying immigration officers are not needed. But which country do you go to that before you check in your bag? Somebody checks you. After you check in your bag, before you even approach the immigration officer, two more immigration officers look at your passport and give it back to you. Then you go into the booth, then they stamp your passport. Then when you get out, another immigration officer sees you. Then when you finish and they scan you, somebody is also looking at, which airport do you see this? It makes experience of when we, when we advertise that Ghana is a gateway for tourism and other things, we all have friends who are expatriates. They don't enjoy this experience. They get treated as if they are criminals until they are proven otherwise. So we need to work on this. So I encourage Ghana Immigration Service, please, work with Ghana Civil Aviation Authority to implement this project, and at all cost. If we can get it for free, don't even attempt to take one dollar from anybody.
Thank you very much. It's now the turn of Honorable Yusef Sulemana.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Nomini, let me also congratulate you for your nomination. Like others have said, when it comes to your competence, nobody doubts it. My first question relates to concrete roads. In twenty seventeen, the former Vice President, I'm talking about the defeated presidential candidate of the MPP, Dr. Mohammed Ummahmood Baumia, promised Ghanaians that he was going to build concrete roads. And in his opinion, concrete roads are durable, concrete roads are cheaper, and concrete roads are the roads that Ghanaians deserve. You are not there yet, but I believe that you might have interacted with experts or officers of the ministry. Do we have any concrete roads built after their promise was made? And do we intend to go that direction? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Yusef, for this very important question. I remember, the story was linked to the former Vice President when he visited one of the roads in Tema. Actually, that project was being executed by a private entity, exactly. So he went there and saw what was going on, and liked it, and said henceforth, you're not going to see asphalt, you're going to see concrete roads everywhere. The fact is that I am not aware government has constructed any concrete road anywhere. It is also misleading to say concrete roads will be cheaper than asphalt, because the QAs and engineers will tell you the road you see as concrete road is actually a reinforced concrete slab. That is, the high, one of the highest level of concrete was still in it. So how is that supposed to be cheaper than the, in fact, you can get between, anything between fifteen to thirty percent depending on the mix of the concrete as the additional cost over asphalt. So, yes, in some cases, if we can, we should build concrete road. Currently, the only public concrete road of significance is the Kratema Motorway, built by President Nkrumah. I'm not aware of any major concrete road project currently ongoing or completed.
Thank you.
A second. Speaker, I want to draw my colleague's attention. He just asked his question. For heaven's sake, please, leave Dr. Baumia alone. Leave Dr. Baumia alone.
Honorable, Honorable.
Take it lightly, any attacks.
Honorable. Honorable.
We should leave the man alone.
Honorable Anodunpray, you are out of order. Oda, you are out of order, Honorable Yusef, proceed with your next question.
Mr. Chairman, I'm grateful. Mr. Chairman, I think my minority leader should be a bit tolerant. And as long as, Chief Huip should be tolerant. And as long as the former president who takes all the benefits that are due, a former Vice President, we will refer to him as and when is necessary.
Proceed to ask your question.
Yes, Chairman, I will do that. Chairman, my, my, even though the nominee has already answered a question on abandoned roads, I want to find out, there were some roads that were abandoned for political reasons. For instance, take roads in the Bolibambo constituency. All roads that were started under the NDC administration in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen were all abandoned. As a member of parliament, I asked a question on the floor of parliament as to when those roads were going to be fixed. And I remember very well, my good friend, Honorable Patrick Boama, interjected and said, what was Mama doing, and he didn't fix the roads? What was President Mama doing, and he didn't fix the roads when he was the president? Today, if we are going to address the issue of abandoned roads, will you consider prioritizing those that were abandoned for political reasons to complete them before you look at other roads? That's my question.
Chairman, for, for the vivid explanation and very unfortunate situation described by my good colleague, that will be priority number one in terms of completing abandoned road projects.
Do you have a follow-up on that? A member has a follow-up. So I recognize Patrick Boama.
My last, my last one.
Chairman, I was just, yeah, I was just putting my good friend from Bolibambo on record that he should produce the answer that said, I made those comments on the floor, else those comments ought to be expunged. I'm also referring the Chairman to standing orders eighty-six on questions and require of you to do exactly what I have requested. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yusef, you see, to ask the question without all this sideline commentary.
Mr. Chairman, those are the one that makes the question sweet. Mr. Nomini, my, my third question is that one of the major roads in the western corridor starts from Tichimai up to Hamili. As I speak to you, the road is in a very deplorable state that in sort of using three, four hours to travel on it, you need a whole day. It's because it was abandoned for eight good years. Will you prioritize this road when next week you are approved? And I know you'll be approved, tell me.
Thank you very much. Nomini.
Thank you, thank you.
Oda.
Thank you, my very good friend, Honorable Yusef. As long as you say about those projects, that is priority number two.
No, I have a follow-up, a follow-up on this, follow-up. I have a follow-up.
My, my. Thank you, thank you very much.
I have a follow-up.
I follow up on the Tichimai very well.
Yes, Mr. Nomini, I said to you that it got deteriorated because of lack of maintenance. So I want to find out, will you prioritize regular maintenance of roads in this country? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, he's asked a very important question. The principle is that you should spend more on maintenance of your existing roads than building new roads. So, but the records we have in terms of road maintenance, and my colleagues on the Road Committee can tell, things have gone really bad in the past eight years. In fact, the record of road maintenance we had in twenty sixteen is unmatched till today. If you check twenty twenty-three record in areas that we do nine thousand kilometers, the MPP government was doing just three thousand. So they have really let the country down in terms of road maintenance program. So I said it in one of my initial responses that we need to commit more to road maintenance. Sometimes, all you need to do is to spend a little amount of money to address a spot improvement, and the road can still continue to be motorable. But once you abandon it, it becomes a major problem and makes the whole road, the use of the road not safe at all. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Honorable Members, Honorable Jaja, Oda. Honorable Members, in line with Order two one seven seven, I will take a question from Jerry Shaibu as a member of the leadership of the House. So Jerry, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I first wish to congratulate Honorable Govence Abuja. My question is, I have made some observations. Please, can you? I've made some very critical observations, including the road markings, street lights, quality of roads, traffic lights. And I don't think that my government has been in power since the inception of this country. So, yes, so.
Honorable Jerry, address the Chair.
Mr. Chair, yes, I am addressing.
So please proceed with your question.
I have realized that most of this are dysfunctional. So from my beloved Malam to Kaswa, you would realize that no street light is working. When you get on the major road, the motorway, you would also realize that, stop talking, stop talking. No street light is working. Most road markings are also not working. In the night, it's not very safe to drive. You can easily get an accident. I know, I know your capacity. I know that you want to prevent accidents, you want to have people drive in a very clean, motorable roads. I just want to find out, what are your plans to have them resolved? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Nomini, your response.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I think my colleague has asked a very important question. This is our capital city. It is strange that you drive in parts of our city at night, and you, the roads are not illuminated well, no road markings. And I know a number of friends from abroad, when they come, they keep asking, how are you able to drive on these roads? Because there's no signage, there's nothing. The, with street light, there's a bit of an issue that has come to the attention of the Road and Transport Committee. If you notice, Ministry of Local Government through Common Fund does supply street lights sometimes. Ministry of Energy does supply street lights sometimes. And sometimes, they supply these street lights and give it to the assemblies and others, and ask them to go and install. Whether those lights are of the highest quality is another question. Whether they are installed properly is another matter. So it is a synergy between Ministry of Energy and the local authorities. As for the roads, the physical roads are under the domain of the Road Ministry. The safety on the, on the road is between Ministry of Road and Ministry of Transport, because National Road Safety Authority is under Ministry of Transport. So I think this issue can best be addressed with a combination of how we, we take a second look at that. Whose job is it to supply, install, and maintain street lights in Adaklu? Is it Ministry of Energy or the Adaklu District Assembly? That question has never been answered. But we all see street light distributed to the assemblies and sometimes through members of parliament. Well, mostly, mainly during elections. So, so we need to address this. And many people have also complained that. And many people have also complained that some of the street lights that are supplied don't last. Maybe it is the way it is installed, maybe it is something else. So we'll address it. But the major things you talked about, including your constituency and the motorway, are of concern. The challenge though is that the motorway is currently under contract. They may have to do some work to an extent for us to know where the, the, the street lighting would be. Because perhaps if you go and even fix them today, next week, when they are doing clearly, maybe to be in the right of way, it will not be there. So that, as for the motorway, we may have to provide a temporary situation. By your area, I will look at it. When this committee generously recommends me to the plenary and I get approval and go to the ministry, I promise to, to get, get a.
Any further question?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, I also heard my very good friend enumerate a lot of problems. One of the major ones is the interest on contracts. And I think I heard you say it's about thirty percent. Are you considering redrafting contracts? So that the twenty-eight days, which is normally when IPCs are raised and they are supposed to be paid and there is default in payment, that is where now the interest arises. Are you considering redrafting contracts? And if so, if so, are we also considering making prompt payments to contractors? Because this is where, this is where, and are you also actually considering having a synergy with maybe some banks so that they can perhaps provide mobilization and pre-financing of some of these projects? Instead of rather getting to pay them as interest? Thank you.
Honorable Deputy Huip, are you talking about review of those contracts or redrafting?
Chairman, yes, Chairman, I think I get, I get what he's saying. And I know you are one of the experienced lawyers in this house. You would know when the contract is, has taken effect. Any attempt to go and redraft portions of that contract, you can, but you need the agreement of the parties that form that contract. So it will be more of the new contracts, I think that is what he's talking about. But that, that is not the solution. The solution is prompt payment. I know that some banks initially took up the responsibility of providing some support to the contractors. Many of those banks have withdrawn since because of this interest matter. Well, I don't want to mention the, the banks. Some of them will say, we'll take you on, but we don't want to be responsible for the interest between you and government. Like I said, if you see what has happened on the first issue in 2018, that because the delays was on two thousand four hundred and sixty-four days times thirty percent. So you can imagine, so every twenty-eight days is calculated and added to the other one. So indeed, we have to look at some of the, the way we, we write some of these contracts. But until the government begins to pay promptly, that would still be very little in terms of achievement and reducing the interest on delay payment.
Any further question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is just a follow up. And on, this is on the basis of the review and the redraft aspect. I'm looking at contracts that you would now, as, as it were, now construct. So new contracts. As to whether or not you want to review, that's not within my remit. But I'm looking at contracts that as Minister of Roads, are you considering maintaining the twenty-eight days where, when there is a default, you are going to pay interest of thirty percent? That is, that is the question, please.
Well, thank you very much. You referred to me as Minister of Roads. It is only going to happen when you, you give it, so I take it as amen. But it is difficult to just say here without consultation. I said earlier, there will be the need for engagement with stakeholders. That's Ministry of Finance, Attorney General, and then the, my ministry. We can come up with something that is more humane to the contractor and sustainable to government. So I'm hoping, when approved, I would update the House as to the best way forward with regard to this particular matter.
Any further question?
Yes. Honorable Nominee, so the repeal of Act five forty, that established the Ghana Highway Authority and what you think the National Labour Commission has done to virtually suspend the implementation of the National Roads Authority? What's, what's your take or your view on that?
The, it's now an act, we have actually passed it, it's in force. The rationale behind that law is to not collapse the road agencies, but harmonize the way they work, which requires creating a new apex body chaired by, led by the Director General. Not much about the law, but it appears implementation has hit, I mean, is, has got to a point where there's a snag. So there's a lot of discomfort at the road agencies, highways, Fida Road and Eban Road. What I can commit to, to do is to sit down with them and see the best way. I'm hearing all sorts of things. I have no way of verifying them in terms of who is appointed to be the head, who is, which agency the people are from. It is to be premature for me to make any definitive comment on that, but I know the House has approved it. If it is necessary for us to pause the implementation and take a look at it, I will come to the House and, and seek your, 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 your approval. If it requires, let's go ahead, but make some changes and bring some allies to operationalize it, I will do the same thing. But it is premature for me to make any sweeping statements about that at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your last question.
Yes, Honorable Nominee, so I've also cited President Mahama's one hundred and twenty-day social contract. I did not, I did not see anything in reference to roads. Does that make it a priority? And is it, is it, is it, is it a matter that you, you would want to pay a lot of attention to?
Well, Chairman.
All members, can we have order?
President Mahama.
Can we have order?
President Mahama is very clear on his mind as to what is contained in the hundred and twenty-day commitment he's made to the people of this country. Indeed, Mr. Chairman, with the kindness of our colleagues from both side, me being vetted today, it's also a record of the expeditions where President Mahama promised to form his government. And I want to thank my colleagues from the, the minority side. The issues he wanted to put before Ghanaians, he's placed them before Ghanaians. It is based upon that, that he's been given the unprecedented win in this election. So if Ghanaians wanted him to add road and every detail, they would have talked about it. Road is a priority to President Mahama, but would, let's look at how he delivers on the hundred and twenty-day commitment, which includes the repeal of some taxes and many other things, which you, you rightly said. After that, we can pay attention to other things. But he's not saying until after the one hundred and twenty days, we are not going to be dealing with roads. Indeed, this is just a second batch of ministers and the Road Ministry is part of it. It tells you how much premium he places on the Road Ministry and other ministries. The other ones are going to come along the same thing. It doesn't mean that the ministries that are not here are not premium. But I'm saying that with specific to the road you talked about, he places a lot of emphasis. And you can also attest to the fact that some of the best and biggest interventions on route in this country happened under his leadership. So he's got a track record of delivering, he will deliver.
Thank you very much. It's now the turn of Honorable Lydia Udolesoa. Rita Udolesoa.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I wish to congratulate my leader, who has been nominated by His Excellency John Dramani Mahama, President of the Republic of Ghana, for your nomination. Honorable Leader, talking about roads. Honorable Nominee, talking about roads, thank you for the correction. Yeah. The Akra Beach Road, Akratema Beach Road, which passes through the Dade Kotopon constituency, started construction a long time ago and the contractor has abandoned site. Due to this, there are quite, quite a number of accidents and pedestrians being knocked down by vehicles because we do not have street lights to be on during the night. I want to find out from the Honorable Leader, whether you are going to add this to your priority list to ensure that the beach road will be constructed in due time to assist pedestrians and motorists who apply their routes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much and I thank our colleague for the question. I live in Tema, so I know the importance of the beach road as an alternative route into Tema. Indeed, that project was ongoing and originally part of the China Development Bank three billion agreement by, may he so rest in peace, President Mills. Since then, the loan was stopped and restarted under President Akufadu. Unfortunately, that project is suffering the same fate of many other projects, including motorway, Adomi, motorway, what do you call it, Central University and many others. So indeed, the contractor is not on site. Once again, it is difficult to ask the contractor to go and fix street lights where they hasn't gotten a stage to, to do that. But I think there can be safety measures deployed temporarily to make sure it is safe. So talking to the, and the resident engineer, I think we can discuss how to make it safe for now as we wait for the completion of that particular project. It's a very important project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further question or follow up before?
Further question?
Further questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. And Honorable Leader, I'm glad the NDC administration is bringing back the toll booths operations. And I also want to support my colleague that when operations begin, inasmuch as we want to prevent leakages, the persons with disability who were recruited earlier and dismissed should be reconsidered so that they also be gainfully employed to take care of their families. I want to have your take on that.
Thank you very much. We are bringing toll, tolling of public routes back. We are not bringing toll booths back. As I said, it will be deployed on a, a, a platform, which means that there wouldn't be physical toll booth where drivers will have to stop and pay. So with regards to the disabled people, sure, we are going to be able to re-engage them. I even said that earlier, we'll re-engage them and make sure that those of them who are capable of playing a role are brought on board to, to, to play a role on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further question or follow up? Very well.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Honorable Minister Nominee, coming, going into the Ministry of Roads and Highways, your colleagues will be knocking at your doors and I believe we are going to find you when we come there, including myself. I know there are some two doors to the, to your office. And I believe when you are there, you attend to us and open your doors to us. On this note, I want to say congratulations on your nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me an idea of where the doors are. I have not, I've not gotten there yet, so I don't know where the doors are. But surely, the door that opens for you to see me and one of you will be able to do this together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's now the turn of Honorable Patrick Yawbono.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Let me congratulate my good friend and brother Kwame Abuja for his nomination. I wish you the very best, Kwame. Kwame, just to inform you that Sunyani Tchimai, Tchimai Wenchii, Solawah have all been awarded for rehabilitation and measures Mari Poma, Hardwick and Vota Impex are the contractors. Just to inform you. Thank you. To my first question. Tessa Nohas, very good roots. Kwame.
Please proceed, proceed. Please proceed, address the chair and proceed with your question.
I will continue, Chairman.
Honorable Sulemana Youssef, please. It is not only speaking into the mic, that can be disruptive. If we talk about disruption, it is not necessarily speaking into the microphone. So please, take a cue, your question.
Chairman, every MP from Seko, Tassokai, Kweis South to Paga, if that person doesn't fly, we either go through the east or through the central corridor. The dualization of that stretch began in two thousand and two under President Kufu. Minister Gidesu at a point suspended the dualization program. To the extent that, Honorable, is he Honorable, Alote Jacobs at a time after your congress in Sunyani raised issues without suspension. President Kufuadu came, he continued from Kwa Fu Chrome, which is in Somwadjuwi to Apedra. I remember in two thousand and nine, President Mahama even commissioned the overpass around the old Peace FM area. Nine indigenous contractors, Kwame, are undertaking the dualization program. Osino and in a, up to a point around your area, Jaso, that area. Want an assurance from you whether those projects will be duly completed and the remaining ninety-four kilometers from Jaso to Konongo will be tackled. And to continue from where the Swami interchange is being constructed through Tchimai, Kentampo and Tamale and beyond, that defines our country's road infrastructure. And the fact that a similar intervention was made from Rollins's time, may he so rest in peace, Seko, Carneshi to Malam, Kufu continued to Kaswa, to Yamransa and to Elubu under President Mills and President Rollins. Amen. Kwame, those are critical routes that has caused a lot of accidents. And if for any reason you want to be remembered for, as a good minister, for roads, including Boom to Afau, you need to remember for these roads. What assurances are you giving to the good people of this country on these critical roads that I've mentioned? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I earlier gave the indication that the president himself had committed to completing ongoing projects. You are also right by listing these projects as projects on site. The little challenge is that many of those, these projects are on the back of GOG. So once the contractors read certificate, they are not paid. In fact, the bypasses on the Akra Kumasi Road, you can tell that the, the intensity of the contractors have dwindled significantly. So it is not merely awarding the project, it is about finding sustainable sources of funding to deal with them. You will notice that in twenty twenty-two or so, you mentioned Swami interchange. We approved the, the loan. I was, I, I probably was the one who seconded the motion for it because it's a critical. because it's a critical uh I mean intersection in Kumasi. And the way it is creates a problem. Since we approved it, it was supposed to be a project done in thirty-six months. But you know that the contractor only turned up on site somewhere close to the end of this, uh this, this year, in the last year. And the percentage of work done on the interchange, guess what? Less than two percent. Terrible. Yeah, there are two, uh two, two components, the interchange component and the other road network within the area. That other road network within the area is just about seven, less than ten percent work done. Also because of the debt restructuring, because it's a loan, a commercial loan from, from somewhere. So as long as we can find the resources, and I indicated earlier, my job is to prepare and package projects and for the finance minister to fund. I would never relent in the advocacy to make sure we have enough money in the city to pay contractors working in our, uh our communities, including Adaklu. I have no doubt that colleagues have the bigger burden of addressing road issues in their communities than anybody else. And together, once we can find the resources, we can deal with these things together, including the road to Jaso and everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you love Jaso. Kwame, I don't know if you have your parties manifesto with you. If not, let me turn your attention to chapter four of the NDC twenty twenty-four manifesto. Powering growth through infrastructural development and more particularly to the road sector. Let me get there. You've listed a lot of roads and bridges to be constructed under that paragraph. That's paragraph four point two point five, upgrading ru- road transportation systems. A lot of roads. Um, I don't, pages one zero seven of two hundred, Roxanne, if you care to know. Pumankuma, Boko, Bogga, Tumowa, Tamale Yendi, you've listed a lot of roads, Abri in Somwom. And um to the extent that you are promising to even regularize Okada and what have you under it. It's in the manifesto. I've seen about thirteen bridges and also a paragraph on road safety. Uh Kwame, given the situation in which you find yourself in and the facts alluded to that the indebtedness of the road sector is close to a hundred billion cities, which you know that the MTF had made provision to pay for it over a period and is captured for the twenty twenty-five to twenty-eight MTF program. How are you going to fund all these ambitious projects? Is it going to be another Green Book promise, Kwame?
Thank, thank you very much and uh.
Please, order.
Chairman, Chairman.
Please, order.
I'm happy.
Order.
These are very important questions and I'm happy he mentioned Green Book. Uh Kumasi, uh Kumasi Airport Phase One and Two was mentioned in the Green Book. In fact, I was there at a meeting in Kumasi, yes, when the committee insisted that the phase that came ala- around the time NPP came uh be added to the phase. Today, the airport is there for all of us, Prempe International, and it's to the, to the uh credit of this committee. MPS Project Atema, that is the port project is in the Green Book. And that project is one of the most viable income generation uh entities for the government of Ghana. The, how do you call it, the Legon Hospital is in the Green Book and it's one of, it's a, it's a the highest end of medical facility in our country. The Rich Hospital is in the Green Book and it's one of the best. Uh, and many, many more, Sekul Interchange, Tamale Airport Phase, uh Phase One. So as for the Green Book, it is a record of achievement. And I think uh maybe, maybe unlike the project tracker, uh these ones are a bit uh in color, you can see them in color. But the significant question you asked, how do you fund this? I must be frank, and I've said it already. The finance minister designate was here and he said, the revenue is just about two hundred billion. How do we fund all the things that we needed to fund, including salaries of us members of parliament? We have to work together to cut waste. How do you cut waste? The fact that President Mahama is insisting on having only sixty ministers is one of the ways to cut waste, without a doubt. Nobody would have thought that a president would say sixty and that includes deputy ministers, regional ministers. People say he cannot do it, he is doing it. So it's a man of his word. Yes, it's going to be tough, but NDC has got tough people to address the issue. I am not promising all these roads that have been awarded. I was very unhappy when we approved the Swami interchange and work never started until somewhere close to the end of last year. And as we speak, less than five percent of the work done. How could we have done that to somebody who served this house all these years? I'm talking about Honorable Chair Mesa Bunsu. We've not been fair to him. So yes, we'll continue that project as long as we find the money and, and, and deal with this. So I agree with you that the list of projects is almost endless and uh the difficulties that some of the methods used to do, to procure these projects also ought to be reviewed. If you have a situation where, for instance, a project is awarded in Ghana to a Ghanaian contractor on a design and build, he comes up and he goes to site and he later comes to tell us how much he wants to charge. Meanwhile, you have already contracted. And he comes up with even a ridiculous figure, you are bound to, to deal with it. So we are also committing that major projects will be prepared, costed better so that we can tie the, the, the cost down so that we can budget properly and get them done. So your project, your question is very important and we shall do exactly that.
Thank you very much, Kwame. My last question, yeah. It's on the Bolivo Adafu Adidome Bridge. I know the Japanese have given us some funding for it and it's less than the project sum. Are you going to um raise money, money to top up or to gather full funding? Thank you. And congratulations again, Kwame. I'm done.
I think uh my colleague has a very important question. This project is very dear to the people who use that corridor. Uh, in twenty sixteen, I think once again I was on behalf of my then chairman uh on uh moved the motion for the adoption of this. So the bridge component was coming from Jika. I think it's about, just about uh ten billion yuan or something like that. The difficulty is that since then, uh for the eight years, we didn't do much because the Japanese insisted we build the approaches from a city junction to the bridge and from the bridge to Esikuma. Because the bridge, the, the access has to be there for them to come and install the bridge. It is only recent that I'm told AFB have given the money for the construction of the approaches. The contractor, we are told, just mobilized to site, so you wouldn't see much going on. Yes, you are right. When they went to tender, the bidder who won the tender, the bid is twice what the Japanese have uh committed to give us. So it will be important for uh government to approach Japan uh to discuss the funding gap, to make sure the project works. I am hopeful we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's now the turn of Honorable Mahama Yarga. You, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And let me join colleagues to congratulate our chief whip on his nomination to the roads ministry. Um, you gave us an indication of the commitments of the roads ministry. And then we have seen very starkly the variation between what we actually got by virtue of the value of projects executed and what we owe by virtue of having not paid and then the debt accumulating based on interest calculated, based on a formula that you yourself disagree with uh in terms of road contracting. That is evidence of a certain indiscipline, which is to award contracts when you haven't budgeted for them. You haven't made provision for them in your budget, you don't have money for them and then you award contracts. Is this a culture that will continue?
Thank you, Sir Chairman. No. This is not a culture that Ghanaians even want us to continue, even if we wanted to continue. Uh, I can understand why some projects may be awarded in an emergency without full packaging. But the norm should be that projects are properly packaged, costed before going to site. And we have already committed that that will be the norm for major projects. If it's necessary for us to do quick interventions, i.e. a bridge is collapsing, that is a different one. But the norm should be that projects should receive best value for money through competitive uh tendering. Thank you.
And the second question, the second question is, when you're flying into Accra, when you're flying into Kumasi and I think the same for uh Takradi, you will see that apart from the major roads to the communities in between the residential facilities, I would say ninety percent of the roads are not done. And then when you go into an estate, go to any estate, you find that the estate owner has done all the inner roads of the estates and apportioned the cost to property owners in the estates and they are happy to pay and live in very fine estates with all the roads down so that in the evening day and their families can walk around, exercise, and then they are happy. Does that give you an indication? Does that give an indication of some mechanism that probably exists for financing those inner roads between the residential areas that you could be looking at?
Yes, Chairman, it's even uh uh associated with even government projects. There are significant hospital projects done in this country, commissioned and is in use. But the road between the hospital and the main road is nothing to write home about. So if you were to be even in an ambulance, the threshold between the public road and the hospital is difficult. I agree with you, if an estate developer can cost the internal roads into and spread the cost over the individual unit, why is it difficult to do one kilometer from the estate to the main road? It's a question. But maybe it's just a matter of engagement between the planning authorities that approve the, the estate and, and the developer. Uh, I'm sure anybody who lives in an estate where the roads are shuttered within and have to struggle for one kilometer before you get to the main road would have preferred that a small amount is added to the cost of the unity purchased to have that freedom. And I think, so I think it's a something we can discuss with the planning authorities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe congratulations are in order.
Thank you. It's now the time of, the turn of the whip. Minority whip, Honorable Anorompray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, let me join my colleagues to congratulate my friend. In fact, I, it's one of the nominees who's near my head and I, I said in my heart that this is a well-deserved one. I commend you highly. You've been patient over the years. And the two of us have had a lot in common. I want to thank you publicly for all the cooperation when you was minority whip. Yes, we worked together. At a point, many of our colleagues had a reason to complain that we were too close. It was for the good of you, Honorable Dafermoko. It was for your welfare and all that matters important. So today, let's, let's set the record straight. Our closeness was for your good. It was for your good. I, I intend to be brief on the line of questioning. Everybody knows in this house, Kwame, his professional background is known, his passion, things to be done rights in the sector is also known. Honorable whip, you've answered most of the questions and if I'm doing by way of recap, I think questions on outstanding payment, you've spoken and contextualized the matters involved. Uh, your ten billion USD matter, you've also contextualized it. You've also spoken about the network. My good friend, Donabu Buama, walked you through the spine of road very critically and you've answered. Though some of your answers were evasive, I thought you, you tried to answer. Um, garnishing of our account, the ministry's account, I think you've also answered in person where you spoke up to how contracts are constructed and the effect of it ultimately affects. My question would be, now that you've observed that the way contracts at the ministry are put together poses some danger going forward and you have been ranking for a number of years. I don't want you to tell me you are going to sit with the Minister of Finance and you see the way out. I want to hear from you because I know you, you have strong professional background in terms of your ability to profess solution, contracts. What do you think? If you're going to depart from what is happening, how should we go about it?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I earlier said, for putting together construction contracts, you need the advice of Attorney General, the Ministry and Minister, the Minister of Road and Highways and Minister of Finance. Why? Whatever you put together as a contract must be enforceable and must be fair to the parties. I know, for instance, the insertion of the thirty percent in most of those contracts was intended to protect the contractors, if you are a road contractor, use your house as a collateral to take money to do a road leading to my village. Should we let the bank take your house? Simply because by the time you are paid, the value of the money is not up to what uh you borrowed plus the interest. No. But it has done a three sixty where it is no longer helpful. My solution, we still need to dialogue. It is not fair for me to just sit here and declare that. It is not fair for me to just sit here and declare that in mind that we will not forget what you are telling us today, and we'll keep reminding you. Thankfully, all of us will be in the chamber, so we'll keep reminding you of the things you are speaking to. Yes. Now, I've looked at your CV, your work experience is so admirable, and your educational background. If you want to contextualize your educational background, a great architect, and then work experience, I've seen the number of consultancy do differently. Do that at the end of the four years, mind you, President Mahama has only four years. At the end of the four years, the Honorable Gavens, the handsome man from Madaklu, what are we going to remember you for? Thank you very much, and I agree with you that there has to be something everybody stands for. I am totally agree. And my background gives me an opportunity to work with other stakeholders in the built environment, and I intend to leverage on that significantly to address many of the issues we have, including compensation. I did not even talk about how much we pay for compensation on things we should have done. As you know, there are right-of-ways that belong to government, and in five years, other state agencies lease those right-of-ways, and government now have to find money and buy them up. So what I bring on board is my background in the built environment, which requires us to do things professionally and on time. You know, my passion is, even if you have to come to work and do nothing, come on time. And I'm going to insist that things are done on time. If we can't deliver something on time, I'll be one of the first to say why we can't deal with it. So I come on board to project a vision of President Mahama to deliver on what is promised Ghanaians. By the way, every president only has four years. You only get additional four years if you are voted again.
Well, that is very usual of Kwame. He will try to come back at you. Anyway, it's okay. Honorable nominee, this will be my last question. You have been ranking for some time, and if yourself and the Chair, Dino Bubuama, are two members of this house that I can just close my eyes and point at, are people we can follow when it comes to the road sector. And you are one sincere person I know. In the context of your sincerity as part of your persona, tell me, what are some of the things that the NPP administration, Elsewhere MPP administration, three things that you can say, speaking as a Ghanaian, not putting on the cap of being on your propaganda stage by your cap of patriotism? And I know you are. Three things that you can say the MPP did well, and for nothing at all, you can praise them for it.
Chairman.
On our members' order.
First of all, I would say I commend the former Vice President that despite all the rhetorics about we will not hand over and NDC cannot win. When we won massively, he quickly handed over. And I want to commend him. I'm not sure he did that with the help of the party. I'm told people got angry with him when he did that. With the second thing, I believe it was good for the MPP to have vision for education and other things. However, I thought the implementation of part of that.
I won't judge the positives.
That will be a bit difficult. So I'll end it here.
Chairman, I am done. I want to commend my good friend, and I also want to wish him well in ministry when graciously we all approve of him.
Thank you very much. I proceed to give the floor to Honorable Roxanne Nelson Kwame-Eche Daphy Mappo.
Chairman, thank you very much. Kwame, I'm emotional. I'm emotional because you go here by dint of hard work. And let me say that you've been in the parliamentary system, you've been a shadow minister on roads, transport, and infrastructure matters for the NDC for the past eight years. You are remarkable, not just in that capacity, but also I can see on authority that the mentorship that you introduce in parliament and mentored engineers, and that's what I love about you. What contractors may not know about you is that you don't like shoddy work. So contractors should take note. You don't like shoddy work. You don't like lateness. And above all, you like people being candid and honest with you, so they should take note. So I wish you well, and I know you succeed with all the difficulties you deliver on your mandate. We know of the agencies under you, the programs and policies that they have in road maintenance, their policies and programs, and the figures from the agencies leave much to be desired. So what will be doing as a policy change, as an arrowhead for the ministry? What will be the change you approach to maintaining roads? So that, for instance, the new road that is between Askuma through Pekki to Kweve Have, when there's a port hole, we'll quickly seal it so it doesn't deteriorate leading to the entire road degenerating to something else. We have to do for big money to go and patch that entire stretch. What will be your change in approach to rehabilitating roads?
Thank you very much, my brother, and the opportunity. And as long as we work together, I learn from everybody as well. As I said earlier, I am going into a ministry with very big interests, three major road agencies. I don't know everything about the ministry yet. I've been looking at it from outside. I need to get in there, take my time to understand them, and together with the players in there, chart a path, a path that makes road construction a viable business for the Ghanaian businessman, the communities getting better roads coming into their communities, and all of us living happily in peace. So what I will do and I can commit to is I'll go listen, and then we develop the best way forward. At the moment, it is difficult to say emphatically what
Fida Road, abandoned, awarded but abandoned in my constituency. That is to do my charity to Tonga Germany. Then I know of Botoku through Kwe to Vako Road. Then I know the nature of Ashama roads. Now, would you consider enrolling out, improving, rehabilitating, and general construction of roads? Would you consider allotting it on regional basis so that, for instance, every region basically could have, say, fifty to sixty kilometers of roads done? Some regions are more important than others in terms of this requirement, but basically every region could boast of, say, sixty to seventy kilometer stretch of roads that are done every year, if that's feasible. And before you answer, let me conclude by saying, Malali school, we are proud of you. We are about sixth in this parliament, and we are very proud of you. Yes, we are sixth, yes, and that's remarkable. So we are very proud of you, and the whole Ombudsary is also proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's always a privilege to go to the best secondary school in Ghana, so that is acceptable. Yes, the road you mentioned, including your old road, I visited you a number of times at Tonga, and I noticed there was a contractor working on the road, but it's not completed. And the other ones that you mentioned, all this frankly would hinge on our ability to fund them. You asked a question and answered it in part. It would have been nice to just say, like, come on, fund, take a quantum of money, split it between two hundred and seventy-six constituencies. But you know, some districts are bigger than others, some have more complication. But what we can commit to do is that every community should have the ability to see, or we should do something in every constituency. There are plans. Some of the things you talk about, Ashama, I had a discussion with an entity. You know, the MPS project originally was supposed to cover the hospital road all the way to the motorway. The motorway is now a different contract, but the opportunity is there to see what we can do from the hospital road all the way into Ashama. So when that discussion starts, I will engage my colleague, the MP for Ashama, to see how we can take advantage of that to complete that section which was started and stopped into Ashama and new town areas in Ashama. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will move to Honorable Patricia Piagie, Deputy Minority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to also add my voice to congratulate our brother, Honorable Abuja, for your nomination and the responsibility given to you to ensure that our road sector is well managed. I have listened to you attentively. You've come out with all kinds of solutions, but you've been lamenting about finance. And I know that you rightly agree that up in issue, you are faced with a problem of financial inadequacy. But one of the issues that needs your urgent attention, for which Honorable Daphy Mappo has already raised, but I want us to have a very clear idea about it, and I'm talking about the road maintenance. If we want to avoid the issue of an upsurge of accident which will result in high fatalities, it is an issue we need to address properly. And I am very much aware that when it comes to road maintenance, we spend less than forty percent, we address less than forty percent of the, and it's not good for us. What happens is that we begin to experience bad roads, especially during the rainy season. So I want you to come out with a clear plan of how you're going to reduce road accidents by ensuring high maintenance of our roads. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You will see in the first budget of the President through the Finance Minister, there will be a commitment to do this in a better way. I earlier said that if you take the record of the last year of NDC in government, which is reported in the 2017 budget, you will see how much work we've done in terms of maintenance on our roads. We are going back to that same program to allocate more resources for road maintenance. You are right, many communities are not even asking for new roads, all they are asking for is to make their existing roads more durable, and we can do that. We also noticed government have procured some equipment under DRIP. I think we can put DRIP to much more better use, but let's wait and see the policy that will come out. I can guarantee you, with the availability of those equipments in our communities, it can enhance improvement in terms of maintenance if we allocate budget for, how do you call it, materials and labor. We can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Nominee. In your answer, I was also expecting an aspect of road, the causes of road deterioration. And in order to bring your attention to that fact, I want to ask you that many of our urban roads face rapid deterioration due to poor drainage systems. How will your ministry integrate sustainable drainage solutions into urban road products? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. As a rule of thumb, I think it is a rule that when you are doing public roads through any built-up area, you need to provide the necessary safety features, drainage, I mean walkways, and where vehicular bus stops, and also speed tables in specific places. As a matter of fact, what we see in many of our communities over a period of time, many of the roads existed in the built-up areas. So what you see is mainly asphaltic overland. They don't normally go to bring up the strength of the base and others because the asphalt looks nice, so they lay it overnight. And you are right, road surface doesn't like stagnant water. Once the water pads on it over a period, it deteriorates. But if you do the design well and it gets all the curves and other thing, the runoff is quick, but the runoff must go into a drain, and that drain must lead to take that water out of that community. So for existing roads, we can still do some improvement, but for new areas, we ought to adhere to these safety measures to make sure the roads last. So it's a very important observation you have made.
Thank you very much. But a follow-up on that, I think we've had several complaints from citizens that we have to reconsider the size of our drainage, and most of our drainage are also left open. And I didn't hear that from you. I want you to consider that fact and then tell us exactly how that can help because it also goes into cost of construction. And so I would demand that from you, Honorable Member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, that is a bit technical for the design of drains as to what the size of the drain, the width, the depth depends on what the engineers envisage in terms of how much water will be coming into it. But indeed, you are right. It's as if when you go through our communities, almost all your drains are the same size, as if rainfall and the runoffs are the same in every community, which shouldn't be. So that one boils down to those who actually carry out the actual design of the drain the actual design of the drains as part of the, the road. So we need to work on that one as well. Thank you.
Honorable, you were in the chamber when the affirmative action bill was passed into law in July last year. Going to be responsible for the road sector, I want you to put on your genderless. And once you wear your genderless, I'd like to put this question to you. Women in construction, especially women, female contractors have often been sidelined in awarding major road projects. How will your ministry ensure equitable opportunities for female contractors and create a more inclusive construction industry? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know few female road contractors. There you are right. The proportion is way against our female counterparts. The same applies to engineering. When I went to secondary school, I can tell after secondary school how many of our colleagues actually went to do engineering who are female versus male. So sometimes it's about their availability also. But we can make a conscious effort. I thought you were going to commend me that I was one of the champions who supported you to pass the affirmative because it's necessary. I want my daughter to grow up to be whatever she want, God wants her to be. And there shouldn't be any barrier based on her gender. So it is upon all of us to work together to make sure that wherever we find ourselves, we create fair opportunity for everybody irrespective of gender to participate fully in whatever activity it is. And I'll put on that lens as you suggested. Thank you.
I thank you. A follow-up on that. I just want to find out if it would not be necessary to consciously ensure that you bring up women in that industry and have or more women into that industry to ensure. Because I know we women are very meticulous. And if they have to do a job, they will do it well. And so I'm expecting you, since you have been the gender champion, to also come out. Don't you think there should be an effort in that direction? Thank you.
Certainly, we should make a conscious effort to, to develop the capacity and give opportunities. So I will take that sincerely on board. Thank you, Chairman.
My last question is on climate, climate resilience. And you know, road construction projects under the, the, the previous governments face criticisms for environmental degradation and poor climate resilience. How will you incorporate sustainable and climate resilient designs in your road project to mitigate flooding and environmental, other environmental challenges? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, road construction is a major contributor to emission of carbon dioxide. Apart from the faulty materials, crushed rocks and other things may be very far away. So the amount of fuel, your pollution you need to carry out to convey material from the source to your site might increase that. But there are ways to do it. You should be able to identify closer material so that you do less haulaging. And you be careful where you, you traverse when you are doing your road project. And maybe we need to start thinking about if you were doing a road in a locality, would there be materials that are of equal quality that can be used locally instead of deciding that you still go fifty kilometers to haulage material from somewhere to the site? So these are all climate resilience features that must appear in every activity we carry, whether it's agriculture, house building or road construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think I have to take back my word. This will be the last one because I forgot to really look at the, the, the issue of traffic congestion, Honorable Minister. Now, every part of Ghana or even let me take just Accra, anywhere you pass, you are met with some congestion. I would like to find out from you. In the major cities like Accra and Kumasi, you are that will be able to alleviate this congestion that we are facing. First, we know that we don't want to spend so much money on fuel and consumption is very, very high. If prices of fuel are high, you know, we're going to go through a lot of expenditure. So it is important that being given this opportunity and as your President has said, you are resetting Ghana. So the, our President, the President of Republic of Ghana mentioned, yes, I've corrected it. We need to reset. So we have to consider how we can address this issue of heavy traffic congestion all over the city of Kumasi and Accra. Thank you if you have any plan to.
Thank you very much. I read the, I think 2013 and revised version of the Integrated Transport Policy of our country. The intention is to have an entire agency strategy. For instance, there is no city in the world that has addressed traffic congestion by just building more roads. You need to have a combination of, of things. For instance, you build some roads, remove bottlenecks by building interchanges. But there has to be a concerted effort in a public transport network. In the previous NDC government, we started this by deploying BRT, Bus Rapid Transport, under the Ministry of Transport. As you know, that project did not actually see much progress since then. But if you are going to address traffic congestion in Accra, Kumasi and others, you will need to deploy a variety of public transport systems and come up with policies that actually discourages people from using too much vehicles. For instance, many people would drive alone in their car to, from their, from home to work simply because there's not, we don't have enough public transport system to, to do that. So it can't be a Ministry of Road alone intervention. It has to be an integrated inter-ministerial intervention, which is Ministry of Transport, Ministry of Environment and the Ministry of Road to come up with the necessary strategies, some light railway, some